Okay, good evening, everyone. Per our current procedure, we're still having our meetings via Zoom due to concern about the COVID pandemic. And because we're on Zoom, I believe we need to have a roll call vote for the managers. Terry, can you do that?
Yes, I can. All right. Manager Crafton.
Present.
Manager DeVal.
Present.
Manager Cook.
Present.
Manager Pedersen.
President.
And President Ziegler.
Present.
All our cousins.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I have a point of order here. When the Zoom recording opened up, there was a discussion or communications going on, particularly by Mr. Welch. And at least according to my screen, more than a majority of the managers were present or listening to part of that. And I want to express my objection if that's the case as a violation of the open meeting law. When this thing is open and anytime there's a discussion, it's to be recorded. Okay? And this is not the first. And when I get to the manager's thing, I also bring up other issues of violations of the open meeting law, Minnesota Data Practices Act. So I requesting pursuant to the Minnesota Data Practices Act exactly what was discussed prior to the commencement of the recording tonight's meeting.
President Ziegler.
Sure, you want to take that?
Yep. Manager Cook, I, it was myself, President Ziegler and Mr. Welch speaking. We were talking about the fact that the delegation memorandum is complete or has not changed. The resolution has changed and Mr. Welch is prepared to speak on that tonight should President Ziegler wish to add it. In the middle of Mr. Welch speaking, I saw that it was 7:00 PM and I hit the admit all. So they were not in the room. They were all, everybody was coming in at the time as they were finishing up their speech.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Being after the fact explanation, I have severe reservations about that. That's something that should not be, you know, conducted in any way, shape or form. And should be more careful about it if there's a discussion. But there were obviously people on a majority speaking before the meeting had been convened. So I will yield at this time and I will make a decision whether or not to do anything else regarding that. Are you?
Okay, so the first matter on the agenda after calling the meeting to order is approval of the agenda. As we were just speaking, there's an opportunity to add some discussion about the delegation of authority. Legal has reviewed it a second time and can present on it. And we can either, it's six pages long, I understand. So we may want to just hear what counsel has to say and then plan to vote on it at the next regular meeting.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
So I have the following motion. I move to approve the agenda with the following changes. And that is to remove from the consent agenda all of the items with the exception of item 6E. And to not take up the issue of delegation until we've had an opportunity to review the documents so that Mr. Welch make a presentation at a later date, we can make and ask informed questions.
So you said all except for item B, which is the staff report?
No, no, I'm sorry, all except item E. I apologize for my lack of pronunciation or enunciation, I guess is the word. So the only item left in consent agenda would be item E as an even.
Okay, so then can you repeat the rest of your proposed changes?
Yeah, the only other change is not to include a discussion of the delegation until we have been presented with a copy of the document and have an opportune time to review it so that we can ask intelligent questions. And that that time, Mr. Welch can speak to the document.
So we have a motion on the table. Administrator Jeffrey, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I believe it's probably the same one that we go to Uncle Welch has, and that's that he will not be present at the next meeting, which is the reason why he thought tonight would be a better time just to speak to it. And then at the next meeting, you could ask further questions and deliberate it out. But again, it's to the discretion of the board of what they want to do.
President Ziegler.
Manager Crafton.
Yeah, I would like to hear Fancil Welch walk through it at least, and then I can still read the documents, but sometimes helps to hear an overview first. So I would, I would still like to have that on the agenda someplace.
Okay, so are you, no one has seconded the motion yet? Are you seconding it with a further motion? Is that?
No.
What I'm hearing? You're not seconding? Okay. Do we have a second for the motion on the table to approve the agenda with the changes we just discussed? Okay, hearing no second, the motion fails for lack of a second. Do we have any motions regarding the agenda?
President Ziegler.
Manager Pedersen.
I would like to move that we accept the agenda, leaving item 6E on the consent agenda, the rest of the items move to items removed from consent agenda. And adding in Mr. Welch to talk about the delegation memo, which I would assume would be item 10C.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Do we have any questions or comments? Before we vote?
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Am I missing it? Is the document referred to posted on the website or a URL in the agenda?
President Ziegler.
Administrator Jeffrey.
I believe Mr. Welch is prepared to speak to that.
Good, Terry. Mr. President, there's no new, the, the delegation resolution and the memo has not changed at all, as Terry mentioned, that was received by the managers at last month's meeting and was in the packet by my understanding. And then there was a resolution that has been revised and was presented to the Governance Committee for some discussion that was advanced the ball, but didn't finalize anything from what I understand about it. So the idea here was not to present the managers with another revision for consideration for adoption tonight, but rather to get some direction from you so that we can bring a resolution back that captures your desired scope of delegation. So I don't think, and you know, especially given that you haven't seen a revision and certainly not timely seen one, it's more a topic of discussion that then I can hear directly from you, go back and revise it, and then it can be on a future packet on the consent agenda, or you know, wherever you like it, and then you can act on it as you wish.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Yeah, I'm sorry, all due respect, this is a futile effort. You don't have the document in front of us. The statute is specific. We're supposed to have before us any document that is to be discussed at a meeting. The statute's very clear about it. You know, it's comprehensive. Provide the documents in advance so any member and any member of the public can look at one at any time during the meeting. Statute's pretty clear. I, I don't want to waste anybody's time talking about something I can't, I don't have in front of me to look at. And I'm not going to comment on something I haven't had an appropriate period of time to do that. So I think it's a waste of our time. And I just want to reiterate the complaints of the other managers from time to time about wasting time, you know, on items where we don't have documents or documents weren't presented. So inconsistent with that prior position stated by the managers, we just shouldn't be taking up this. This should be a matter for a workshop, but with Mr. Welch can, can participate at that time when we discuss it.
President Ziegler.
Manager Crafton.
So my understanding, based on what counsel just said, is we already had that in a packet before that was all written out. So that was pretty clear to me what was in there. Where counsel Welch is just asking for some direction on the resolution. So I'm, I'm comfortable. I feel like I've, I've read that before several times. So I don't see a problem with them just having this informed discussion, just information on 10C.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Okay, so this is a point of order. We're not complying with the law. Okay? It doesn't make any difference how many thousands of times a document was presented. The statute's clear. Okay? We don't have it presented here. It wasn't on the agenda before. It wasn't made available to us that it was even going to be discussed today. It is, in my opinion, a breach of one's duties to go consider something that wasn't on the agenda, something that I think is probably as important as this matter is, and it's worthy of discussion at a workshop when we talk about changing all, whether changing all the rules or the governance manual. So on that grounds, I object because it's violation of the statute. I'm finished.
Okay, do we have any more discussion before we vote? Administrator Jeffrey, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, on the motion to, to approve the agenda with items A, B, C, D, and F moved to item 9A on new business and to have Mr. Welch speak to the delegation of authority under item 11C. Manager Crafton.
Easy bet. Mr. President, point of order.
Manager Cook.
Uh, my copy of the agenda that I took off of the website before has an item G, if I'm not mistaken. And if, unless I misunderstood, I misunderstood Administrator Jeffrey, he did not mention item GB. Perhaps I misunderstood. So could Administrator Jeffrey clarify what that motion that we're going to be voting on then?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, the item 10G.
6G.
6G, yes. I'm removing items A, B, C, D, F, G, H, excuse me, if I didn't say G, leaving only item 9B on. Wait, no, 6G?
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it'd be five. I'm, I'm sorry, it would be five, under five, I guess. whichever, we have the agenda, what is it? Do you have it now at seven?
Seven consent agenda. That item G was removed earlier because, because it was implicated for rule J and there was not adequate consideration given to rule J on that. So it was not ready to bring before the board for approval.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
You know, we cannot be having, you know, people send out the agendas with the items on them. We look at them, we copy, we transfer the documents. We can't be having changes without receiving notice. This is plain courtesy. Okay? We should be notified of changes in the agenda. So now we don't have an item that's, that, you know, was scheduled to be on the agenda before. I mean, this is, this is not a best practice, be changing after the fact without notices. And I don't know about anybody else, but I do have another job. Okay? This is my only job. And the last thing I need to is try to go down, chasing down changes in the agenda. Wouldn't it be just as easy to send out a notice of a change of agenda? Try, I yield.
Okay, we were starting the vote for the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Chair.
I, Michael Welch.
Thank you. Terry, did you want to go ahead and not have any discussion? Do you recommend that the managers amend the motion to approve the agenda with item 8F? Am I looking at it right? Because the numbering was that permit, where did that one? This is last month's agenda, I think.
You are correct. I haven't scrolled back up. Yeah, I was sure.
There we go. 8F, you wanted to remove that.
Yep, and that has, that's the one, yes.
All right, but to Manager Cook's point, that, that published agenda did have that on, so I think that that should be removed by action of the board of managers. So I would recommend that you add that to the approval, if in fact, Terry, you do want to go ahead and just remove that one.
It is not ready for consideration, so yes.
So just so I'm clear on this, the item 6G is still just moved, it's not removed. So it's moved from consent to action items. Is that correct?
That is correct. Item A, B, C, D, F, G are moved to item 8A. Item, the item that was for the permit review for the house on, on Frontier Trail is not ready because rule J is implicated and was not adequately sussed out in the permit review. So that needs to be removed. I believe that would have been item 8F on the public agenda. And then item 10C will be the report from Mr. Welch on the delegation.
Thank you. Manager Cook, did you have a question?
Well, Mr. President, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm at losses to really where we are. I, can you summarize what, excuse me, go back to eight? I'm confused as to eight. I know we were proposing to move to the consent agenda, those items other than E. Okay, but is there still G? We're, we're taking that, there was G on there. I wanted that removed. So I wanted everything other than E removed.
That is correct.
Remove, but move to item 8A.
That is correct.
Okay. And then we still have B, C, D, and E under eight. Am I correct?
That is correct.
That, that's the motion. And then, my understanding, you're adding a C. And as part of that, Mr. Welch is going to make some kind of presentation.
That is correct, under 10C.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yep.
Okay, can we continue with the roll call vote, please?
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager DeVal.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Pedersen.
Yes.
And President Ziegler.
Yes.
Five, zero, we have an agenda.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is matters of public interest. And I'd like to welcome to the board meeting, anyone may address the board on any matter of interest in the watershed. Speakers will be acknowledged by the president. We still say, please come to the podium, and we hope to get back to that soon. State your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Additional comments may be submitted in writing. Generally, the board of managers will not take official action on items discussed at this time, but may refer the matter to staff for further report or direct that the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this time?
President Ziegler, Mr. Rod Fisher is here, representing Duck Lake.
Hi, I assume you can hear me.
Yes.
Yes, my name's Rod Fisher. I live at 1816820 South Shore Lane on the south shore of Duck Lake. And thank you, Mr. President, Board and Staff for just allowing a quick comment, and it's a happy one. I'm the new president of Eden Prairie Duck Lake Association, which you've met before. And we are constantly working to bring attention to the lake and build recognition in the community. And I just want to thank Wild Ones Prairie Group. We were host, three of us on this shore last week, were host to a large group of gardeners, and they're pretty serious about native plantings. And they found, and it was Marilyn Torkelson, so you know that, that group, I hope. But she found that we had three of our lake shores having been renovated into native plants, all of them partially at least funded by, by the watershed district. And there were two rain gardens in the front yards that were also toured, and one of them was funded by you. So I just want to say thank you because there's a lot of activity and a lot of interest among neighborhood people. And I was just happy to get a little recognition for that on behalf of Duck Lake. So thank you. That's all I have to say, but oh, well, except I look forward to working with you all in the future as well. Thanks.
Thank you. And thanks for bringing that to our attention. I believe there was another one at a different location tonight. And there was a little bit of miscommunication on our part. We didn't, we didn't get to the one. We had a different board meeting at that time, and I only found out about it a couple of days before, so it, we didn't get to attend that one.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Fisher for presenting before us, and I guess congratulate him on his presidency of the association. That may be a mixed bag, but thank you for making a presentation before us.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak at this time? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is reading an approval of the minutes of the July 12th board meeting. And the continuation of the July 12th board meeting on the 17th, the 20th, and the 26th. Do we have a motion on this item?
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I move that we waive reading of the minutes and move to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
President Ziegler.
Manager Crafton.
I had a couple corrections that I found. So I assumed that Manager Cook hadn't submitted these.
Oh, okay, do you want to go through them?
Hey, yeah, page five, line 84. Bonnie from Red Path is spelled wrong. It says Donnie, and it's supposed to be Bonnie, B-O-N-N-I-E. And on page nine, line 174. The board can attach a condition of approval requiring any renewal request for that particular permit comes back. I think it should say for that particular permit to come back to the board. Under, on the same page, line 207. Manager Cook pointed out that at the time, the board approves it permit. So I think it meant the permit. And that's all I had on the 12th.
Okay, were there? I guess we were going to try and do these all at once, unless there's other changes that are significant.
Okay. President Ziegler.
Yes.
So on July 17th, the continuation of July 12th. On line 14, well, line 13, Manager Cook moved to continue the meeting to 5:00 PM on Thursday, July 20th, 2023. Line 14 says Manager Cook seconded the motion. So I'm assuming he can't make the motion and second.
So I believe you seconded it, is that correct? Or was it someone else?
I may have.
Yeah, that's what my notes show.
Okay. Yeah, I'd sent Terry a note on that one. I didn't know it wasn't corrected.
Okay, that's all, that's all I had.
So we had a motion and a second. Manager Cook, you made the motion. Are you accepted? Would you accept these minor changes?
Oh, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Yes, I, I'm inclined, one, I'm inclined not to, because I've stated this many times before. We agreed on a procedure, and it appears that certain managers continue not to want to follow the procedures. The reason for the procedures is to save time and not go through the minutes during the meeting, get the corrections in beforehand. That said, for this time, I will accept the changes. But I, we need to start following the rules that we've set up. Otherwise, we're in no position to require others to follow the rules that we have.
Manager Pedersen, do you accept the changes?
Certainly.
Okay. Administrator Jeffrey, can you give us a roll call vote? We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes with the minor changes as stated.
Mr. Ziegler, do you approve the minutes, July 12th and the continuation on the 17th, 20th, and 26th with the changes presented by Manager Crafton? Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager DeVal.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Pedersen.
Yes.
Ziegler.
Yes.
I zoom.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the committee reports. The Citizens Advisory Committee Report is the first or the next item on the agenda. Who, who do we have? Do we have anyone from the CAC who's going to give that presentation?
President Ziegler.
Yes.
We had no one from the CAC that was able to attend this evening.
We have all of the tour.
Okay, we do have the, the draft minutes from them. Is there? is there, uh?
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I, I move that we table this item until next month, when the C A C. can, uh, be present then, that, you know, they can give us the final one. Final minutes. I don't think it's appropriate to receive draft minutes without the C A C. saying something.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? I guess I'll, I'll second it. Um, so the motion is to lay this over until the next regular meeting. Um, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, Mr. Jeffrey?
Uh, Manager Crafton.
No.
Manager Devell.
No.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Patterson.
No.
President Ziegler.
Um, yes, but it fails, obviously. Um,
Three motion laid on the table, fails.
Okay. So do we have? Manager Patterson.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the C A C. minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I just want to express my objection to this. I think it's when these are drafts in the first place. I know we should be in a position to be accepting drafts in the first place, whether it's this meeting or prior meetings, certainly without having the C A C. here uh, on, on that basis. So I'll get back.
Okay, any other discussion? Administrator Jeffrey, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yeah, on the motion to accept the C A C. minutes. Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Devell.
Yes.
Manager Cook. Manager Cook, I'm sorry, did you?
I said no, I'm sorry if you didn't hear it.
Nope, sorry about that. Manager Patterson.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
Order one.
Okay, um, so, uh, the next, uh, item was to confirm the board representative for the August twenty-first C A C. meeting. Do we have anyone scheduled?
President, I'll volunteer.
Um, okay, thank you, Manager Devall. Um, any other discussion on, on the, uh, board representative, representative? Okay, hearing none, uh, the next item is the Governance Committee Report. I believe the draft of the government's Governance Committee minutes was attached. Um, I read through them, and I didn't see any required changes. Manager Devall, do you? Did you see any changes that were required?
I did not see any either.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the, uh, Governance Committee Report uh, as written and provided.
Mr. President, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Um, well, well, first of all, in, in reading the, the minutes, um, having been on the Governance Committee before, um, I have to state that I come away with the presence that, uh, uh, Administrator Jeffrey is trying to, uh, and I'll use his words, commandeer the committee, uh, in its positions based on not only delegation authority, but uh, the governance manual, uh, and its provisions. So it's number one. Uh, also, I, I know that, uh, in the discussion about delegation authority, there's a statement that I quote, most watershed districts participating in metro wide regulatory have delegated most everything to the administrator except for variances of projects. I don't know if that's true, but I certainly wouldn't take that at face value without having some, uh, some facts to support that and to know exactly what they're delegating how and whatever limitations there are. So I would put this to the Governance Committee that before making a decision on that, and maybe Mr. Welsh can chime in, but until I see it in writing, I'm going to have my doubts that, uh, we get some substantiation of the positions of the other watershed districts, at least those close enough similar to us. Um, my other comment, uh, is, uh, having to do with Attorney Smith shared a resolution on screen. Um, based on what I could see, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see where the resolution was provided or attached as part of the agenda. Correct me if I'm wrong. And if it was not, that was another violation of the open meeting law. I said it before, this seems to be a a bad habit of not following the precise statute of making sure that a copy is available for review. And I, I'm confident that it clearly doesn't mean the copy while it's on the screen being discussed. Uh, that would not be consistent with, I believe, uh, past practices or the interpretation by the by the state office governing these. Um, I, I'd also say that, uh, in reviewing the discussion of changes to the manual or proposed changes, uh, it was difficult to do, understand, uh, some of the provisions, but the one that, again, on a similar note, having to do with the open meeting law, uh, was a discussion about, uh, have what materials were to be, uh, present at the meeting, and I'd like to suggest that uh, the Governance Committee and the council review the statutes uh, to make sure they're uh, following the statute when they are deciding on what language should be included in the governance manual regarding the the retention pension and the and the, uh, presentation of documentation and and with that, then I will yield back.
Okay, we have, um, motion and a second. I guess I'd like to revise the motion slightly to include a screenshot of what was sha- shared on the screen, but not attached to the notes. Is that something that we can easily do, Administrator Jeffrey?
President Ziegler.
Yes.
So yes, that resolution that was shared is, uh, this resolution, the one that we were talking about, um, earlier with Mr. Welch, and it is available on our website right now. We can certainly make that available on the Governance Committee site as well.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Uh, need to respond to your comment only in that, uh, I don't believe doing so, uh, resolves or absolves the, uh, privilege of the open meeting. I yield back.
Thank you. Uh, Manager Devall, do you accept that as a friendly amendment?
I do.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the, uh, governance report? Administrator Jeffrey, can we have a roll call vote, please?
No, um, approving the Governance Committee Report, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Devell.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
No.
Manager Patterson.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes, accepting the, uh, the report, not approving it.
Or two one.
Okay, um, the next item on the agenda is the, let me see, Governance Committee for receiving, I guess, is the way we've written it. Receiving the report. The next item is the Audit and Finance, receiving the Audit and Finance Committee Report. Do we have any motions on this item?
Uh, President Ziegler.
Manager Crafton.
Which, what did we have here? I didn't know if you wanted to know what we discussed. We just met Tuesday, so if you wanted any reporting on any of that.
Uh, so there is a written, uh, minutes that was provided.
Okay, all right, then that's, yeah, that's all the same. Okay, never mind.
President Ziegler.
Yes, Administrator Jeffrey.
These are the minutes from the July eleventh Audit and Finance because of that two-day turnaround, so July Audit and Finance minutes are available for tonight. If you want Manager Crafton to speak on what was spoke, what was discussed at the Monday meeting, that would be in addition to these minutes.
Okay.
President Ziegler.
Manager Craft.
Okay, so I'll hold on just our comments and, and I'll, uh, make a motion that we accept the, uh, July eleventh minutes.
President.
Receive them, yeah.
Manager Devall.
I, I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion or questions on the July eleventh uh, minutes? For the Manager Cook.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first of all, I, I know it's very first paragraph that there was, uh, presented the Treasurers' reported Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District. I believe, uh, uh, again, yeah, if, unless this was posted or made available at the time of the meeting, other than, you know, scrolling through it on the screen, there would be a open meeting, uh, violation. Um, I only had a chance to look at what was it, uh, the Valley Branch, um, was attached. Was the Comfort Lake also attached to that same email?
President Ziegler.
Yes.
I would have to go back and, and verify that, uh, if it was or not attached that email. We did receive, I think we received from one other organization as well, so it may have been that one, but, um, I can order.
President Ziegler.
Manager Crafton.
Yeah, we were supplied those things before the meeting, because I remember reading them all, so.
President Ziegler.
They were sent out.
Manager Cook's point is that it was not available on the website for the public to view.
Oh. I thought it was just the materials available for our discussion and committee.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I, I, I certainly appreciate Administrator Jeffrey's comments on that, but I just want to make sure that I had not yielded the floor um, uh, on that basis, and so thanks for the information. I appreciate receiving copies of what, what, of this report and the other one that was received, uh, uh, on my comments, so I, I do appreciate that, um. I do, uh, just, I'll go down to, to my list here. There was a discussion about, uh, it, it appeared to me a, a discussion in that we wouldn't have project budget, but and, and I wasn't sure what was meant by that. And I want to point out that my reading of one oh three B requires project by project approvals. Okay, and I believe, and I'll just state this, I believe there's a misreading and over broad reading of one oh three B, and that if one goes to one oh three B, to find out that project that's under one oh three B must be approved, and, uh, you know, are part of an item by item. Uh, and that as a result, those should be reported item by item. Maybe I misunderstood the point, but my point here is, is that we should be maintaining at least a project by project uh, itemization on the budget, a, having that included item by item by each month report, um. Next item under discussion was four M. So you, you know, it says it's supposed to be a, a zero balance account. I believe I understand what that's supposed to be, because basically you sweep the account every night and, uh, of any funds uh, in there, and then you transfer whatever you want to, and, you know, the, the next day, but here's my confusion. So I believe it was last month, we had a negative balance of, I don't know, ten, twenty thousand dollars, I forget what it is. And now this month, we have zero. So I just want to know what is, what will be the correct accounting, or is it, or is it zero, or do we have a plus balance? I'm sorry, on that right in front of me, I had to pull it up. But anyhow, I'd like to have this. I'm sorry, we have a plus twenty thousand dollars of this. So I'd like to have this figured out. What is it? It, you know, it's supposed to be zero, then it's zero. What time are we, you know, making the accounting numbers? It, it doesn't seem that we have a consistent, uh, yeah, policy. Uh, I'm also interested in having some explanation at some time from somebody about the reference to, uh, State Statute one eighteen A. and some concerns that apparently somebody has regarding the, the processes for, uh, investments. I don't know what that means, but I'd like to receive that explanation uh, of that. Um, I'd like to mention under the the discussion of per diem payments, uh, I have provided, uh, links to the IRS website specifically stating without exception, um, that that language, having to do with payments to government officials, et cetera, would be W two reported income and not I nine. So based on that, I would ask that we make sure that whoever is advising us is aware of that and can show, if we don't report it as W two, can show, uh, the specific authorization for reporting it on, uh, on, that should be I nights, ten ninety nights. So I'm sure that's a, uh, miss, uh, misspelled, it should be ten ninety nights, uh, on that basis. Um, also, I look forward to, uh, discussion of maybe using another means of, uh, of, of payment, whether it's bill dot com or, or whatever, um, on that basis. Um, one thing that, uh, I believe it's going to be a question for the Governance Committee, et cetera, having to do with who we get paid for once, but I want to add two things at this point. One, the federal statutes override state law with respect to minimum wage, minimum payments, uh, except as, you know, provided by federal statute. It would be, you know, W two income, um, and so unless somebody can show, you know, legal authority by the ten ninety-nine, I believe we would be required to report this as W two with the appropriate, uh, accounting and holding, uh, in, uh, on that basis. So before we go over to ten ninety-nine, we need to make sure that we have a wealth on the basis, uh, for doing so. I think I've mentioned before, this might be a good topic for Minnesota watersheds, uh, to, uh, to look into, and if we have to do W two, and we think that should be ten to ninety-nine, there's always a method and a means to going through the service uh, and or changing statutes to, uh, to allow us to do ten ninety-nines if they're otherwise, uh, prohibited, uh, uh, from reporting it as, as ten ninety-nines. And finally, I'll just mention, I know there would be some confusion on the part of at least some accountants, et cetera, because, uh, often Board of Directors of corporations, their income or their payments as directors' fees are reported as ten ninety-nines. Uh, that's also set forth in IRS, uh, materials. But I point out that the IRS materials having to do with payments to government officials, et cetera, referred to W twos and not ten ninety-nines. So with that, I yield back.
Okay, um, are there any other questions or comments before we vote on, uh, accepting the, uh, Audit and Finance Committee Report? Or I think it was July eleventh. Hearing none, Administrator Jeffrey, can we have a, uh, roll call vote, please?
Uh, we received the Audit and Finance Committee Minutes from July eleventh. Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Devell.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Patterson.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Five zero.
Okay, um, that brings us to the Consent Agenda items, and I believe the only thing that remains on the consent agenda. On the consent agenda is item E. Approved final payment number 11 for. $10,211.04 to Rachel Contracting for Lower Riley Creek. Do you have any motions on this item? Manager Cook?
Yes, I move that we adopt Resolution 23-052 with the insertion of the description for the approval of Pay Application Number 11. To Rachel Contracting as set forth in item 16 of the agenda.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, Administrator Jeffrey, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Patterson?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Five zero, Resolution 23-052 include item E only.
Okay. Let me see if I can make sure I'm not. Missing the stuff that was moved. So the first item that was moved is. Adopt Resolution 23-052 to approve, oh wait, I'm sorry.
It's already done.
That's already done. So the next item is to receive the July staff report. Do we have any motions on this item?
President?
Manager Duval?
I move that we accept the staff report.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Manager Duval and a second by Manager Patterson. Do we have any discussion on this item?
Yes, Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
So I have a. A number of, but I'll just go to the questions that I wanted to, the first thing I had was under cost share, page three. It refers to 10 active grants, you know, et cetera, site visits and that. Can we, is there a report or can a report be generated and provided to those of managers interested regarding? The applications and status of grants and what they were done and what's their status? That would be very helpful, you know, I mean, this is a really good summary, but sometime during the year, if not. Twice during the year, sometime to get a more complete report that we can review. And then we can always ask questions about it, but I would appreciate knowing what these projects would be. So that was my one comment, I was glad to see that there's apparently starting to schedule a follow-up. Visits on past grantees, I want to move this through this quickly for you. You know, under Education and Outreach talked about updates to the website. I have sent, you know, I stated before, I sent a number of comments, concerns. About clarifications on the website, I have not received any type of response. I believe at least a number of my comments are important because it's challenging in some res. In a number of respects to get through the website and find what you're looking for, so that's number one. Number two is. I believe we should be getting, I know we have more recent meetings, recordings on the web, on the YouTube channel. I believe all of our meetings, including the Governance Committee meetings, Accounting and Finance, et cetera, should be on there. So everybody can look at it, so I don't have to go ask the Administrator Jeffrey to send me links to documents, et cetera. So I think that would be, you know, starting from now going forward would be good and that, you know, catch up for this year maybe if. If that would be appropriate. Go down to my next. Under Lake Vegetation Management, and the second paragraph texts about $3,000 IS control grant for Lake Riley. And so my question is, is, are these grants something we apply for, do we apply for more than Riley, et cetera? Can somebody give me a little, just a little background?
President Ziegler?
Administrator Jeffrey?
Manager Cook, and if I'm wrong, then Seth Maxwell can chime in. He applies for grants for all of the lakes, it's kind of first come, first served, so we may get two one year, we may get four another year, we may get one. I believe he just got notification today that he got one of the grants. Which will pay for a point intercept and a couple of lake surveys, so it is a nice, nice return for us.
If I may continue, Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
Oh, thanks for that information, I don't know what the criteria is, but, you know, I think your two major lakes are obviously Lotus Lake, Lake Riley. And, you know, as far as general recreation, maybe Lake Susan fits in there too, but I don't know if that gets the same kind of traffic. So I just wanted to make sure that we're getting, making application because Lotus Lake has its issues, obviously. I'm curious, under University of Minnesota, there was apparently Minister Jeffrey, Seth Maxwell, at a roundtable. Discussion about society and lake management, and I'm curious if wake boats in particular came up during that roundtable? Or hasn't it occurred to you?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, it was. It really was what, what the district focuses on for lake management? And why and how we select those things, so. Wake boats came up in as much that it is an issue of emerging concern and that is something you hear from a lot of the public on. But nothing in terms of actual solutions or what he's seeing on other lakes, but researchers seeing on other lakes.
While I'm on this point, it came to my attention that I believe it was. Michigan or somebody had a study having to do with wake boats and. Some findings that I think consistent with what the university found in its first. What do you want to call it, experiment, et cetera, and I think Hope Management got a copy of, or staff got a copy of that and take that into account. And I think that wake boats is, it should be an important consideration. And under what we call EH, because I believe we're not just. What's the word, terrestrial, I mean, in the sense of land, but we're also water and. And as I believe the report points out, these wake boats affect the bottoms of the lake, it's not just, you know, the surface, but affects the bottoms of the lake. So I hope staff will review that and that it will be reviewed as part of the EH, which is why I call it EH issue. And I think this applies to the EH, you know, brainstorming sessions, I think that would be a good item to, to discuss. I'm almost, let me try to finish up here. You know, one comment I had, go down to Lake Riley alum treatment. I know you're doing the borings, I guess, we'll come up with that, but. You know, the water quality, you know, I would like to know if the water quality is a real function of the alum or of the zebra mussels. And hopefully the quarry will, will help us answer that, that question. Or at least partly answer that, I just, I throw that out as something worth discussing. You know, a short comment on Lower Riley Creek stabilization, you know, it says crash scores significantly improved, there's another one. But the upper one, they say crash scores, you know, decline. That doesn't help me very much and it would be more helpful to say it was at, you know, 32 and now it's 39. So there's, you know, some objective references, so I just ask that, consider when you're discussing that, giving some objective data to. To, to address. And I noted, well, the one thing I noticed was that the tab about, or the line about Duck Lake Water Quality Project was. Not included under Purgatory Creek Watershed. Was that moved or did I miss it or?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, good eye. As there has been no work on it recently. Other than maybe it's, it's really a finished project.
Okay, that's, thank you, I was just. By its absence, so I'm finished, thank you very much.
Okay, so I believe we had a. Well, correct me if I'm wrong, did we have a motion and a second to accept the staff report?
President Ziegler, Manager Duval made the motion, Manager Patterson seconded it.
Okay, so any other questions or comments before we have a roll call vote on accepting the staff report? Okay, I hear none, Administrator Jeffrey, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Patterson?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Five zero to accept the July staff report.
Okay. The next item. That was moved to the action items is to accept the, or I'm sorry, it says receive. The engineers report. Do we have any motions on this item?
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
I move that we accept the engineers report.
President Ziegler, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on the engineers report?
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
I just have, I think it's, you know, two comments. One, it was particularly having to do with, I've raised this before, I'm kind of concerned, I guess this was page two of five. I, H and. And I know it's stated before that engineers field these calls about applications, et cetera. And what I, one I'd like to know is, do we track those so that if these turn into permits, we shouldn't be giving away our time? Where, where we would otherwise be entitled to be compensated for our time on, so do we track these in any? In any method or?
Administrator Jeffrey, do you have, have an answer for that?
President Ziegler, I do have an answer for that, Engineer Solbak, could you answer that?
President Ziegler? In terms of the pre-application phone calls and emails, those are not tracked separately for each individual one, it's just assigned to the general permitting number.
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
I would like to suggest that, you know, staff and engineer discuss this. Because some of these I've, that I've read end up involving some significant discussions and. I don't know that we should be answering and providing all the information that otherwise would be provided in a permit application, so. I'd like this, I'd like staff to consider whether or not there's a method or possibility of trying to capture this, this information. With that, I yield back.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments regarding the engineers report? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote? Administrator Jeffrey on. Is it accepting or I forget now? Yeah, receiving the engineers report?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval? Manager Duval, did he go away? I will come back to him, hopefully he returns. Manager Patterson, Manager Cook, excuse me?
Yes.
Manager Patterson?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Hmm, four to zero. Manager Duval absent.
Okay, so the next item is the July, receiving the July regulatory report. Do we have any motions on this item?
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
I'll move to accept the July regulatory report.
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on the. Why, the regulatory report?
President Ziegler, before we begin, I would like to, if I may, update, I just heard from Manager Duval, his power went out in his home. So he'll join us when he is able to again.
Okay, thank you.
Manager Ziegler?
Administrator Crafton?
Yeah, is that possible, you could, is there a phone number that you could use?
He's back.
Okay, sorry, never mind.
Okay, I'm assuming Manager Cook that you had a reason for pulling this item?
Yes, I did. Am I, so I'm looking at, in particular, the house on the east side, is that the Laredo Drive one where they demoed and started working without getting a permit?
That is the front. That Frontier Trail, no, you're right, that is a Laredo Drive one. And that was the one that was going to be on tonight, but since Rule J is implicated in it and they did not adequately address it. But Council Welch is shaking his head, I get these confused all the time, there's few on there, so.
Right, Mr. Chair, Managers. 2023-027 is the one that was on, that's off, 2022-012. Is different. And I think Manager Cook was asking about this Laredo Drive one, but obviously he can clarify.
One, if I can continue, I'm looking at the one that was, is on the east side where apparently they did a demo. If it's under review, I believe it has come back to us since they proceeded without getting a permit. Secondly, I want to make sure that, you know, this permit fee includes all the extra time and effort that staff have put into chasing this down. And third, in reviewing this, I just want to make it known that. You know, I, I became aware of it, not because I could see it, but because I could hear what, what sounded like tons of rocks. Being dumped out of a dump truck, so if nobody has examined that lot, I suggest you do because I don't know of a reason to dump. A lot of rocks unless they were. Unless you're building, you know, retaining walls or riprapping shore, et cetera, so. That was kind of the number one reason, and then. The other one I wanted to, so these, and then basically what, what are we doing with these other ones? One goes back to March, one goes back to April. Are we allowing people to proceed on these or? My view would be they should stop immediately until they get a permit, can you enlighten me?
Yeah, President Ziegler?
Yes.
Manager Cook? We, it will depend on the level of risk to the resource. For instance, if there's something that they can't, that is immediately adjacent to a water body and is going to cause detriment. Will allow them to continue to finish that project or at least that portion of the project. Other ones such as the Lake Lucy excavation of the ditch within the wetland, that one we're working through with. The city of Chanhouse and the DNR, Carver County to, to get something that's going to be compliant with their, with the whacker requirements for restoration. Then they're going to have to come to us with a permit for that, so it's a bit of a more convoluted project. Single Tree Lane, this, this actually gets into a much larger question, one that I, you know, conversation I've had with. Council Welch a number of times, and that is, at what point? Do we bring them to the board and just say, yeah, you're not moving forward, and then what steps do we actually have? So I think this is actually probably a good workshop topic, is how do we want to? Set thresholds at which point, you know, step two, step three, step four. Set thresholds at which point, you know, step two, step three, step four is implemented.
If, Mr. President, if you're finished.
Yes, I am.
Yeah, may I may continue? Side of the floor. You raise a good point. This, I don't feel looking at this that. You know, having something in March and not being completed. Is acceptable. And I think we definitely need to discuss this. And make this as part of the rules even that we have some deadlines whereby if action isn't taken. You know, we go in and get an injunction or whatever is required. To stop construction until they comply. You know, other, unless, you know. Good show and I, you know, there can always be, you know, an exception, but. You know, we've got a March, we have an April, we have a May, we have a June. That's just, it's getting out of hand and. I hate to say it this way, but you know, we need to make it known that, you know, we're serious about these rules. And the biggest consequences, I think that a contractor builder can have is. Stop. You can't do any more work and you're not, you're going to end up not getting paid right by the homeowner because. You don't have a permit. So yes, please put this on the schedule sooner rather than later. To discuss how to, we might review the rules. Which is one of the things I want to address during the managers report, but I can mention now, I think we really need to move. On reviewing the rules. And I don't think we just wait for E-HAP to be finished because I don't know if that'll ever be finished per se. But I think it's important to address. The impact of, you know, weight boats and weight bottoms based upon some of these reports we've just, most recent one and. The past one, and I understand another one's coming up and. And to look at imposing requirements under our rules for. Cities to adopt ordinances to protect our, our water resources. So. That, that's all I have to say. I just want to make a point. We, we can't be letting these. These issues languish, you know, fish or cat bait. If you're not going to do anything, you got to undo everything. You know, whatever we could do, we got to go to court, we got to go to court. But once you do it, I think people end up paying attention. Unfortunately, you know. There'll always be the first one and unfortunately it's kind of like Martha Stewart, right? You know, it, it was very little money, but. You know, securities exchange decided I have to get the message across. So that I, I, I'm finished. I, I yield back. Thank you very much for your. Information.
Okay, so do we have any other questions or comments on? Receiving the July regulatory report? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Jeffrey?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DeVal?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Pedersen?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes, I can see manager DeVal's in the dark.
As I am most of the time.
Good, well, sorry about that, but. Okay, E was already approved. So F is approved pay application number seven. For four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to Sun Ram Construction. For Middle Riley Creek. Do we have any motions on this item? So I'll make a motion to approve. Pay app number seven. Well, as I just stated, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
So I, I had a couple of questions and. Number, first question I had is. Why are we running this? Through July twentieth, but if I understand that this is the maintenance part? And why wouldn't it be a, at least a full seasonal type of? You know, time period?
President Ziegler?
Yes, engineer Sobian.
Manager Cook, the reason that we are running it through the July twentieth is because that represents one calendar year from when it was substantially complete. Representing the first year, first full year of maintenance. Partially last year. And then through this year through July.
Mr. President, I'd like to continue. Well, I, my view is I'm a little concerned about doing it this way. I would suggest we review this. Because. I don't know how much there is to do in one half of the year versus the other half of the year and. And it seems to me it would make sense to base this management on at least a growing season basis. So that, that was, that was my. My comment and was the first comment. And the second comment was that. Is. I take it that this. This contract went down, or was passed, proved. Before we adopted the. Holding five percent until substantial completion. Is that correct?
President Ziegler, manager Cook, that is correct.
Thank you. As all the questions I have, thank you. I yield back. Oh, well, excuse me. One other thing, would it be possible to send us a? A, a non-encrypted, non-locked copy? Because with a locked copy, I can't put notes on it. And it would be helpful for me if I could. Get a copy that I could put notes on, you know, using. Adobe, so that's it. Thank you.
President Ziegler?
Administrator Jeffrey?
I just want to clarify on that last point. Yeah, I've run into those issues as well. We could do that, but it would be an unsigned copy. So if you don't mind having a signed copy put somewhere and then an unsigned copy for you to review, that would be, that's doable.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Okay. So do I understand you're done, manager Cook?
Yeah, I am finished. Thank you. I yield.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? On the. Pay app? Number seven? Item F? Hearing none, Administrator Jeffrey, can we have a roll call vote, please?
We got an approval of pay application number seven to Sun Ram in the amount of four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for Middle Riley Creek. Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DeVal?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Pedersen?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Five zero.
Okay. So we removed item G, is that correct?
Item G is next to be discussed, yes.
Oh, okay. So item G is approved pay app number seven. For nine thousand five hundred dollars to Sun Ram Construction. For Pioneer Wetland Restoration. Do we have any motions on this item?
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
I'll move this. As you described it.
We have a motion by manager Crafton, a second by manager Pedersen. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
I have the same questions and comments on this item as I did on the previous one. Am I correct to assume the answers or responses the same?
President Ziegler, manager Cook, that is correct.
So on that basis, I just suggest that we reconsider. Having years that. You know, stretched across the end of a season. And perhaps when we look at the contracts, we have. Something for, if there's a half of a season payment and then for full seasons. I, I just. Don't like the idea of paying for a half a season before the season's finished. So. Yeah, same comment I have. So I yield back. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on? This pay app for Sun Ram? For nine thousand five hundred dollars? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, please, Administrator Jeffrey?
Certainly. Pay, pay application number seven is Sun Ram Construction for nine thousand five hundred dollars for Pioneer Wetland Restoration. Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DeVal?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Pedersen?
Yes.
President Ziegler?
Yes.
Five to zero. You're on to new business.
Okay, the new business, the first item is. Well, removed items from the congenit, consent agenda we already covered. So the first and the next item is to. Accept the June treasures report. Do we have any motions on this item?
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
I'd like to move acceptance of the June treasures report, which was reviewed. Compliance with our internal controls and procedures.
I'll second.
We have a motion by manager Crafton and a second by manager Pedersen. Do we have any questions or comments on this item?
Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
So I, I have a, I have several comments here. Back to the first page. First of all. I've looked at the Valley Branch report. Form of their report. I like it. The process for, for two reasons, or their report for two reasons. One is. The reason for the payment, explanation of the payment. I believe it gives the accounts, et cetera. I think that's something we should have. I. Even though I'm as guilty as anybody else, we've been approving payments without any reference to what they're for. Or what they're related to. And I think at a minimum. A best practice would be. What Valley Branch does and have a list of each one of the. The pay items, a description of them and the accounts which they, they pertain. So. That's number one. I can't look at a list and know what they're for. I mean, having been. Here for a while, I can guess what most of them are. But then again, you just have a lump sum, you know, to Smith Partners. You don't know. You know, what it pertains to, the same thing with, with our engineering without having to look at the complete internal report. Which I end up having to do, you know, most months. Second, I have one timeout, come back to that on the. Payments here, but I'm wondering why are we including a? We're including an after the, well, all of these are after the fact. Payments. On visa and I just strikes me as this is. This is just, you know, I don't have any day. This is just inconsistent. So we paid amounts. Without having. If, without having approved them, I don't know. We approved those amounts and if we approved them. Where are they listed? And we end up approving them. So I'm, I'm confused. I, seems to me that's not the best practice and. And presents an appropriate accounting issue. And, and, and I don't know if the county finance committee looks at these before they go out, but. I'd like to suggest they do because I think this. Reporting in particular on visas is an issue. And when we're talking about. Visa issues, I still think it's an accounting issue. To be listing the credit card company as the vendor when they are clearly not the vendor. And despite having the table that is generated. I do not believe that's consistent with current accounting standards. On, on how to do that because it requires you to. Basically have to try to find another. Ledger to. And it doesn't give you an adequate determination of how much you've spent with any particular vendor. That's the issue. So you have no way without doing a lot of work to look and see. You know, how much were you spending on a particular vendor? Does that make sense? And, you know, overall scheme of things with respect to a vendor and it would be very hard to spot. Fraud or other issues until you went and did an audit and I'm. Not confident that even the auditors would catch something if this is the way. That the, our financial statements are set up listing a credit card. Company as the vendor. So I continue to have issues. With that. One other item. We had this discussion before and. I think that. We have audit and then we have accounting, but then as an audit, I believe that we should be putting the accounting. The work done by our accountants on the audit should be, I think, put into the audit costs. And I'm sure they already separate those out, but to lump them with the regular accounting. We can't determine whether or not what we're paying for our regular accounting is in line with what our understanding that it probably should be. So I'm recommending county and finance staff. Treasurer look into breaking out accounting and auditing and put all the auditing work under. Audit and it would obviously then be broken out. In the financial statements at, at year end. And my, my final. Sorry. Again, I've already mentioned now this month, we have a twenty thousand dollar plus in US bank last month. I believe we had a negative number. Somebody, someone's got to figure out. You know, how that makes sense. Because technically you're not supposed to have a negative balance. Maybe that's not the actual balance, but then if it's not the actual balance, I think we need an explanation. If a negative number shows up by saying either it's, you know, unreported, checks clearing or whatever the situation is. Because having a negative number, I think is, is generally considered a, a red flag. And then my, my last comment is that, you know, I've submitted two per diem claims. When at the beginning of. Of July, excuse me, June, when at the beginning of July. I have not received payment of either one of them and particularly June, happy so I got there were no, excuse me, July, there were. Were no adjustments on July, so I don't see a reason why that wasn't paid with respect to. July, there was a question on two line, two line items, but none of the others and nothing of that was paid. So there was. Way more than enough time to have processed the uncontested. Claims that I had, yet they were not contested. And I just referenced the Minnesota wage theft law. And that I believe we should have concerns about not paying. These wages and despite the fact that we call them per diems and we say we're going to pay a certain amount for a day. I also want to point out, there is no such thing as a. Under the statute that limits us, it just says the, there's a maximum amount per day we can be paid. Although that is probably. Superseded by federal minimum wage laws. So I would suggest that staff. County and finance and legal look into those and. I also expect to receive interest and. Whatever other payments entitled to under the. Under the wage theft law, it would be me not later than the, the next meeting. And with that. I yield.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments about the accepting the treasures report? Administrator Jeffrey, can we have a roll call vote on accepting the treasures report?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager DeVal?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
No.
Manager Pedersen?
Yes.
And President Ziegler?
Yes.
Four to one.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Resolution twenty-three dash zero five three. Approving payment of the bills. Do we have any motions on this item?
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
I'd like to move adoption of Resolution twenty-three dash oh, oh five three. For approving payment of the bills.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on this particular item?
Mr. President.
Manager Cook?
I just repeat all the time. I just, uh, repeat all the comments I made about the uh, bills to be paid that I made, uh, in connection with the acceptance of the accounting report.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the, uh, Resolution twenty-three dash zero fifty-three, approving payment of the bills? Hearing none. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Jeffrey?
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager DeVal.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
No.
Manager Pedersen.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Four to one.
Okay. The next item is to review and approve uh, variance from Rule B for the floodplain uh, for placement of fill within the floodplain. Um, Administrator Jeffrey, are, are you going to go through this one or Engineer Sobiak?
Engineer Sobiak will be going through this.
Managers, uh, what you have before you for consideration is a development in Chanhassen, south of Highway five. Uh, would be west of Audubon Road. Um, the applicant is, uh, Excel Energy. Um, they're looking at developing a twenty-two acre site. If you want to go to the next slide, Administrator Jeffrey. A twenty-two acre site with roughly seventeen acres of disturbance, uh, creating nine point, almost seven acres of impervious surface. There are four water resources on this site. In the northeast corner, there's wetland two. On the west side of the property, there's what's referred to as the Northeast Tributary to Bluff Creek. Uh, bisecting the property, there's an additional water course in light blue. And then on the south central portion of the site, there's a small wetland termed wetland one. Uh, wetland one will be, i- is roughly thirty square feet in size and will be completely excavated and eliminated, um, based on approval by the WACA Authority, the city of Chanhassen. Um, wetland two will be impacted in that a portion that sort of southerly arm that extends down to the southwest portion of that will be filled. Again, it's been approved by the LGU under WACA. Uh, the Northeast Tributary, uh, receives runoff from the site and there will be, uh, storm sewer outfalls is turning into the water course. And then the, the water course that bisects across the site, uh, portion of that will be filled to create a water body crossing. Administrator Jeffrey, next slide, please. Um, this is the compliance summary. Uh, in summary, uh, they are generally compliant, uh, with a lot of the same, uh, conditions that we typically see during permit reviews. Uh, such as we need to know who the individual be responsible for erosion control, need to record, uh, the buffers, the wetland buffers, um, need to provide a maintenance agreement for the stormwater BMPs, um, need to replenish the permit fee deposit, need to provide a financial assurance. Uh, need to provide a maintenance agreement for the water body crossings. Couple of things that are a little bit unique about this is, uh, one of the conditions under Rule G is a slight design adjustment such as to reduce the flows going into that northeast tributary to Bluff Creek, a little bit more than what they're showing. Um, or demonstrate that their, their flows won't cause increased erosion in that water course. The, the larger, uh, one here is they are requesting a variance from the floodplain rule. Uh, the discussion around the floodplain, if you remember, the wetland to the south will be completely eliminated. Uh, the compensatory storage requirement is that they provide the compensatory storage in the floodplain adjacent to that water feature. Well, that water body will be eliminated, so they are unable to provide the compensatory storage adjacent to the water feature. Um, Administrator Jeffrey, if you'd like to go down. So that's why they're asking for the variance. Uh, my, where's? Here you go, right here. Just to remind the managers, the variance criteria that are listed in Rule K. Um, some of the things to consider as we work through this is how substantial the variance is from the provision of the rule, the effect of the variance on government services, whether the variance will substantially change the character of or cause materially adverse effect to water resources, flood levels, damage, or substantially detrimental to neighboring properties, whether the practical difficulty can be alleviated by technically or economically feasible methods other than a variance, um, how the practical difficulty occurred. And in light of all these factors, whether allowing the variance will serve in the interest of justice. Next slide, please. Again, this, this slide is intended to just show on the aerial photo so you can get a sense for what the site looks like today. You can see the various wetlands. Administrator Jeffrey is pointing it to wetland one there in the south central area, very small wetland, thirty square feet that will be excavated to create a stormwater wet detention basin right where that BMP, right where that wetland is located. Next slide. Um, how substantial, uh, the floodplain storage that is being, I call it filled, but eliminated with the wetland is three cubic yards. Uh, but with the creation of the stormwater pond at that location, they're creating three thousand one hundred and seventy-seven cubic yards of compensatory storage below that one hu- existing a hundred year flood elevation, um, which results in a significant increase in floodplain storage on the site. Next slide. Uh, the next two items, uh, effect on government services and whether it will cause substantially change the character or cause material adverse impacts to water resources. Through the analysis, they've demonstrated that they are meeting the rate con- control requirements. They are providing abstraction to the maximum extent practicable and they are meeting the water quality criteria. And that's all been able to use to demonstrate that they will not cause adverse impacts off-site. In addition, the net increase in floodplain storage uh, also helps show that there will not be a damage to governmental services. The practical, technical measures that they've considered um, is again, the two wet detention basins on site is creating significantly more storage on the site than what is there today. And the, uh, because this wet one will no longer exist, the compensatory storage cannot be created within that same floodplain storage of the same water body. The applicant did create the circumstances leading to the variance. However, they did so, uh, with the approval of the city of Chanhassen, who's the LGU for administering WACA. Uh, because the project increases storage below the hundred year flood elevation of wetland one through excavation of the proposed stormwater BMP, the engineer finds that there's adequate technical basis for the managers to rely on to grant the requested variance. Um, with that, I'd offer up if there are any questions around the variance.
Uh, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Uh, I just want to be clear. So is, if you go back to the, am I understanding? So we're going to have water retention is going to be in the same general location as that thirty square foot wetland? And do I understand this correct?
That is correct.
So we're literally, would it be fair to say one is literally expanding the wetland, but removing the wet land? If you, if you understand my just-
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, so that's, that, that, that answers that question. So it's, it's, it's not like we're moving their storage offsite. We still have it onsite. And, you know, one could say we actually expanded the wetland, but we made it kind of a different kind of a wetland. Is that, would that be one way one could describe it?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, yes, one could describe it that way.
Okay. Um, the one thing that concerns me and it concerns me about these variances is the fact that, you know, it is created by the uh, applicant. And I think just saying that the WACA person approved it, I don't know that that absolves, uh, you know, the applicant of responsibility. And I don't know if our rules, I don't know that our rules technically allow this. And I think that there would be room for reconsidering this rule to consider these things where even though you might, the applicant may have created it, you know, if they've increased storage, et cetera, et cetera, that we should have something in our rules other than this blatant statement of, of they created the, they created the need for the variance. You see what I'm saying? It's a, to me, there's a logical issue here. There's all, you know, and you, you, you're going down all the steps. And as I read that last step or the second to last step, um, I, I, I don't, I don't see exceptions. Maybe I'm, maybe I don't understand it. Maybe I'm not reading it carefully. Um, so I, you know, I, I, I think our rules need to be changed. And I have concern about proving this because of the language we use in our rules concerning you caused it. And, and, and the last question, it, do we have a provision in our rules? And if we do, can you show it to me? Do we have a, a, a balancing language where we can say we can ignore one rule or if the others are more and, and, you know, cover all the issues? Do we have any type of language in our, in our rules having to do with variances like I've just described?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, um, if I'm understanding correctly, the the only path that applicants have to not comply with a criteria would be a variance approved by the Board of Managers. Or I guess there is an alternative. If they are providing better resource protection with their proposed project, there is the except and exception provision also in Rule K.
But if I may continue, it would seem to me that what you said, we're providing better protection. But maybe I'm not understanding this correctly. And if we are, I think we should be going forward by including that as one of our bases for granting the variance. Comment?
The, in terms of providing better protection, yes, they are reducing the rates lower than what is there today, but they need to do that regardless to comply with the stormwater criteria.
But if I may continue, but they, but they also are because of the WACA rule, right? They're providing like way more than their three X, I think it is in additional wetland or withholding or whatever that rule is. Am I, am I correct?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, the, the WACA provisions have, have no implication in Riley's regulatory program. Um, and the, the compensatory storage issue is also something that is for the district and WACA handles wetland replacement based on area. And that's handled by the city of Chanhassen.
Right. But what I, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that e- even though it was, you know, I, I'm trying to get over this hurdle of it was created by the applicant. And I'm saying, do we have language or exceptions in the rules that say notwithstanding we could approve this as a variance? Because literally we're putting the storage right where the wetland was. Isn't that the issue? I mean, it's not the same water body because the water body is too small. Am, am I missing the point?
Because, because the water body will no longer exist.
Well, no longer exists, but it wanted to exist in, in some modified form on a much bigger scale. Am, am I correct? I mean, it's, it's substantially the same location, is it not?
It is. Spatially it is.
Okay, okay. That, that's, that's what I'm trying to figure out. So I, I don't have the heartburn. You know, overall, it seems, okay, that makes sense. I mean, we're taking out it, but we're providing lots of storage and gosh, you know, so many ducks will be in there anyhow, et cetera. And we all know how these ponds evolve, you know, over, over time. And so, uh, overall, I'm saying, you know, that technical reading of it's not in the same floodplain, it just seems to me, I don't know, over tight, or maybe it shouldn't really apply. Am, am I making any sense at all in what I'm saying?
President Ziegler, Manager Cook, yes, you are making sense in terms of what you're saying. And this is something that, uh, Council Welsh and I talked about during the review development of this. Um, we elected to go forward, I elected to go forward with the variance process just to keep it as clean as possible.
I, I understand, but it, it, I guess it's, the, the word is conundrum, uh, for me. Uh, just on the, the wording of our, of our language. So I, I'm looking for a way to say I can discount this. I cause and effect issue. And does our language say, look, considering all the factors? You know, we, we think it's consistent or do we have to meet all of the factors? That's what I'm looking for. I'm, I'm looking for an answer to that question.
President Ziegler, I believe Council Welsh would like to make a comment.
Council Welsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. The variance factors that Scott's outlined nicely in his memo and then you're presenting to the managers tonight are factors to be considered by the managers in making what is fundamentally a, a mixed question, a decision on a mixed question of discretion that the managers exclusively exercise and the technical analysis that the engineer performs. And as Scott described, we did discuss this one and he asked the question, is this really even a variance? And I said that consistent with past practice on these, it should be a variance because they are not creating, they are not complying with the rule, strictly applying the rule with regard to compensatory storage. They are not meeting it. Their design, which has in part been approved by the city as pertains to this wetland change is creates the problem. But that doesn't make it such that the manager's hands are tied. Uh, the variance factors are just factors. They're not rule requirements that you have to tick all those boxes and you have to reach a positive technique conclusion. They're not technical issues. I mean, the last one is in light of all the factors, whether allowing the variance will serve the interests of justice. Well, that's inherently in the manager's, you, you know, determination as a, you know, quasi judicial body making this decision. Um, and, and the fact that the practical difficulty occurred here by the agent, by the applicant and the fact related to that, that the city who's exercising land use authority has approved that are both part of the puzzle that is in front of the managers. And I have to say, I understand Manager Cook's conundrum on this. And I think the engineer has presented this as, as best you possibly can and made a recommendation that this is what I would call a technical variance. Meaning it achieves the purposes of the rules, but it does it without complying, strictly speaking, with the rules. So I think Scott is very comfortable with the technical basis on which the managers would base approval of this variance.
Mr. President.
Manager DeVal. So wouldn't it, would it, to, uh, Manager Cook's point, wouldn't it be appropriate to approve this variance? And then have some statement regarding the language as the reason why, just so that it's in the record? And somebody wouldn't have to go through the analysis if it's ever questioned again?
Mr. President.
Manager cook.
I know, I think traditionally, well, I've been dealing with variances, we have had a. At least a, a recitation of the requirements. And for the, are the factors and. A, a summary statement, I guess, that, or at least a summary statement. Stating that we believe that based on the factors, the evidence presented, and you know, we've decided to. Grab the variance for various reasons. I mean, I'm inclined to, I mean, I think they should be able to go ahead because I think basically they took a wetland and actually made a bigger wetland. It's not of the same quality or condition, but. I mean, it's sure going to be wet if we get any rain. Um, it's just going to have a different, and, and I'm just, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just getting wrapped around, uh. A, a stake, so to speak, of, uh, you know, them creating it. And I've always had that issue. You know, with, you know, most of these applicants create, create the issue or in connection with the city created, so. I, I, I finished, go ahead.
But President Ziegler?
Uh, I can't tell who's speaking.
Administrator Jeffrey.
Please go ahead.
Let me, uh, just add a few columns that while they are not, um, germane to our review, they are. Uh, germane to the larger question of the functions and values of the existing basin. And what will be there in its place? Uh, the existing basement is what's called a PEMAD or a Pollistry and Emergent Vegetation. A hydrology regime, which means. Uh, usually spring flooding, the rest of the season it's dry. And then D means drained is in there, there is some conveyance away from it that is, that is taking water out. You would be allowed under the Wetland Conservation Act to excavate within that type one wetland. Provided you don't go deeper than deep water habitat. There is no habitat provided, there is some rate control provided, but lesser rate control that will be provided. By the new basin that's put there. There is some storage that's provided, but again, lesser storage than what is provided there. And currently, um, right now it is in fallow ag land, but typically it is in cultivated land every year. So the habitat, any wildlife habitat benefits do not exist. Um, so I believe in, in, in total, in this instance, and this does not apply to all wetlands, for instance, one that. Uh, at the end, you had talked about in the past, Manager Cook would not, would be one of those egregious ones where we're really. Filling in that basin. This one, I believe there are functions and values that will exist after. The construction of this feature that will more than replace what is being lost in this PMAD weather.
That's all. Mr. Mr. President? You know, and I. That's what my, my gut tells me, Administrator Jeffrey, you know, that all things, you know, the environment isn't worse off. I mean, obviously, putting him a building is, is a, you know, is a separate issue. But ju- but just looking at the wetland, I don't know that the environments, um. You know, less off, but I do have this conundrum of dealing with, you know, the factors. You know, I guess I would almost look at it as if it wasn't a variance, but, uh. I'll, I'll, I'll stop at that and people can make whatever motions they, they want to, to make.
President Ziegler?
Manager Crafton?
So I have some real concerns about this, um. So I was going to ask Zach Dickhouse, but. So are you saying we're not losing any wetland functions? Administrator Jeffrey?
President Ziegler, Manager Crafton, in this instance, I would say we are not simply because of the degraded nature of this wetland. Um, and it's, it's de minimis size. Now, do I think carte blanche, we could apply that to any wetland scenario which just happens? No, absolutely not. I think if they did this in the northeast corner, it would be an entirely different discussion.
Okay, I guess, so I would like to comment to, I assume Zach Moan is. Present and he's related to this project as a consultant.
He is the engineer, consulting engineer on it.
Okay, um, I guess I've always thought of Excel as an ally, um. In terms of reducing greenhouse gases, um. Moving to renewable energy, I know I've. Subscribed to WindSource probably within two to three years after they started it. I've got solar panels on my house. Um, thermal and PV and. We're in a real crisis. Some of you may have noticed that the temperatures are going up and what we've been learning more recently. Is that unless you have. A functioning water cycle. We're going to keep going in that direction. We're disrupting the water cycle and the ability. For precipitation to actually go into the ground in a way, in a soil sponge that's, that's meaningful. Um, and then use transpiration out of the vegetation and trees to cool the local atmosphere. So I guess my concern is having learned new, more about new sciences coming out. I would hope that, that Excel and future facilities. Would try to protect wetlands or enhance them and make them. An asset as part of what they're trying to design instead of filling these in. I think it's reprehensible. Um, we need, we need them. We, we know they're going to be saturated soils. We know that they have. Things beyond abstraction and, and rate volume, um. That are really important in terms of the environment and what we're doing, so. Um, I'm really disturbed that this was designed the way it was and not to enhance the wetlands. But to minimize their value. So I'm going to vote against this in, in, just in the interest of justice. Because I think we're compounding the issues. For climate impacts and, and the results that are impacting the whole country. So anyway, my two cents, but. I'm really disturbed about this.
Any more questions or comments or, uh, even motions on this? I'm sorry, Mr. Welch, can you, uh, you can speak. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I, I am understanding from Administrator Jeffrey that Mr. Moan is representing the. Applicant here and, and I would recommend that. The managers hear from the applicant to the degree the applicant wishes to address them.
Is Mr. Moan on? I didn't, I don't see him.
President Ziegler, this is Zach Moan with Loax here. And, uh, yeah, if I may, I can kind of walk through, and I know there's a representative from Excel here as well. Um, yeah, I can just kind of walk through, um, and I know Lee Stokes is the project, uh, manager, engineer for Excel. With the project, um, so we, uh, feel free to correct me, but I can kind of walk through kind of the process of how we, we landed here. Um, Excel's been looking to, um. Basically, uh, relocate their Wakoni and Shorewood service centers to a new site, um. And we did go through the full, um, WACA process, um, which did have to do avoidance plans. We looked at, uh, multiple different ways to lay this site out to meet Excel's needs. While preserving, um, is, there is significant wetlands on the site with, uh. Bluff Creek on the west side, um, the wetland in the northeast corner, as Administrator Jeffrey noted that. Um, we did, um, avoid to the maximum extent practical. Um, Excel did also look at multiple, um, other sites, um, to develop instead of this one. Um, and that was all part of the joint application, um, that did go through the technical evaluation panel. Um, and was ultimately approved by the city, um, as the LGU. Um, I will say we did, um, really try to keep this, you can kind of see how the sites kind of offset. Um, to stay away from the west side with the creek. And actually, anything that is disturbed outside of Excel's actual. Yard and pavement areas, buildings, um, is proposed to go back as more of a native vegetation, um. And with that, we did design the, um, ponding as, um, more of a. Kind of a native corridor, um, I know. We did look at possibly going with underground systems, but that, um, ultimately that the surface basins did. Basically replace that wetland that we're talking about now as wetland one, um, basically replacing that with. Uh, another, um, you know, natural, um, BMP that could treat. The site water, um, prior to discharging to, um, the Bluff Creek on the, on the west side. Um, so we did, we did go through multiple iterations through that, um. Joint application, um, as part of the WACA process. Um, I guess I would turn it over to Lee Stokes if he has anything to add, but, um, did my best to try to cover it from Excel's perspective. How we, we, um, landed on this site. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, Zach, uh, this is Lee Stokes. And I, I really don't have anything to add other than, uh, as a layman, you know, this is not my area of expertise, but. Um, I think the, the new storage pond. Actually maybe provides more of a wetland than the existing wetland one does right now. It may not be technically correct in, in your area of expertise, but that's the way I look at it.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the comments on, and I would encourage if there's any way to enhance these to be more functioning as wetlands. That, that that happens, um. It's, I'm, I'm just concerned about where we're going in terms of temperatures. People are dying, so. With heat, heat exhaustion and heat stroke, so. What we're learning is the more we do in one place can actually affect aridity and drought in another area, so. Concerned about it, but I appreciate the. What you went through to, to try and enhance us the best you can, so. Thanks.
President Ziegler?
Yes, Manager Pedersen.
So, uh, I took a really thorough look at this and like, uh, Manager Crafton. I once again see that we are losing. Uh, natural states, um, like these wetlands. Because the applicant wants to put a ginormous facility. On the piece of property that's there. Our, our net loss. With the amount of impervious surface, I. Continue to look at many of these permits and wonder how many things we've actually approved where. We have a, a much larger loss of, um, pervious surface because of what we're, we're allowing to be permitted. I, I understand that the applicant and all the applicants that come before us. Have all these wonderful reasons and, uh, you know, how they're going to. Uh, care for the land while they're, uh, putting these ginormous structures up on the size of the space. Uh, and I think that as managers, all of us are going to have to. Get used to seeing this kind of thing on a more regular basis. This is not the end. Uh, I, I think, uh, we're going to be tested time and time again. And the climate change is not getting any better and. Um, I, I looked carefully, I, I, I listened carefully to the comments. That Mr. Moen made about, uh, trying to put in sort of more native material. I, I looked at the material. I wouldn't say ginkgo trees are in any way native. Those are from China. And I can see you put like fifteen or seventeen of them in. I'm not seeing. Uh, a number of species there that I see on Doug Tallamy's list of sort of the basic. Native requirement trees that we should be putting in on sites. I, I don't know where you got your list from. But that's not really what I would consider an adequate list to choose from. Um, I, I, I understand that we are going to be adding more compensatory storage by. Taking a very small, uh, wetland that's probably not worth a whole lot just because it's so small and it's. Been in ag areas for a, a long period of time. And so I think in this case, because I'm hearing what the engineer is saying, I'm hearing what Manager Jeffrey is saying. I, I think I would probably, uh, be okay with going ahead if I knew. That Excel is going to do a better job of, uh, in fact, trying to make that into sort of a, a wetland. And then in fact is going to pick better plant materials out that will. Create more of a wetland, a native wetland structure. Uh, so I guess that's my, my comments.
Mr. President?
Manager Cook?
Uh, I want to, uh, move this along and I want to move that we. Adopt the resolution set forth on page one of the, uh, report. And which reads resolved that the various requests for permit twenty twenty-two dash zero seven four. From compliance with rule B subsection three point two B. Is approved based on the facts and analysis provided by the. R P B C W D engineer below. And I want to insert there and the information provided by the applicant. And placed in the record at the August second, twenty twenty-three meeting of the managers. And that the managers find that based on all the facts and circumstances that, uh. Uh, that this variant should be.
So I'd like to second the motion, but I'd like to add a little bit, uh, in that there's two, uh. Uh, I'm going to call them stormwater ponds or BMPs. Um, and, uh, it seems to me that there's room to make those. Uh, the footprint larger, so you know, more acres. Um, you know, af- after taking away. The wetland and adding all the impervious surface. Uh, I applaud the, uh, having the BMP above ground so they can have. Some of the functions of a normal wetland. But it seems to me that it could be bigger, uh, in both of the locations where the BMPs are located. They could be larger, uh, without, uh, interfering with, uh. The structures or the, uh, other impervious surfaces. So I, I guess I'm. Saying that, you know, have the engineer work with. Uh, our engineer and, you know, try and maximize the, uh. Uh, area of those BMPs. Um, Manager Pedersen?
Yes, may we amend your motion, yours and Manager Cook's motion. To, uh, incorporate the comments about using better native plant materials. I just, I don't, I've looked at the list and I, it's just not, I don't think it's where it needs to be.
I would agree with that. Manager Cook?
First, first of all. Um, unless there's something in the rules that allow us to require an expanded, uh. Ponds or allow us to require a different list of vegetation. Uh, then we can't, we are not allowed to impose that upon the applicant. And we are, we are. I'm not here to argue for the applicant. I'm here to argue for the rule of law. Okay, and the rule of law is we have our rules. If the applicant meets our rules. Okay. They're entitled to their permit and we either grant a variance for the reasons they say so, but. I don't know that trees or size of the pond is a basis to refuse. Uh, you know, the granting of a variance. I mean, we don't have to grant a variance. But I think based upon what I've read and heard. Uh, you know, they've satisfied all of the criteria that we have listed. To be taken into account in determining whether or not to grant a variance. And we can't be arbitrary and capricious once we've set forth criteria. So I, 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 I can't accept, you know, the, the suggested amendments to the motion for that reason.
Okay, so, um, if you don't accept the second to the motion, do we have a second to the motion? As, uh, presented by Manager Cook?
President, President Ziegler.
Administrator Jeffrey.
I'm free on, uh. Michael Welch would like to speak to the matter, um. And. I'll let him say it because I think I would have the same comment.
Mr. Welch.
Well, I defer in the first instance, Mr. President, to the, your call for a. Unadult, uh, a second to Manager Cook's motion. I stand aside for. That opportunity to advance this discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay. So, Manager Duval. I take it is seconding Manager Cook's motion as made, which is, uh. As he articulated, I'm not going to repeat it because I think it was. Uh, consistent with the presentation from the engineer and the adding of the record. Uh, materials from tonight's discussion, the presentation by the. Applicant and that's been captured there. I also will say that it is indeed the case that if an applicant comes forth with a. Application and a plan that your engineer finds. Meets your rules. Um, then that applicant gets the permit, you know, we, we establish bars in advance and promulgate them. And then if you jump over them, you get to the other side. That having been said. The managers can certainly. And I, I heard Manager Ziegler to add. That. He wanted the applicant to maximize the area or to try to maximize the area of the BMPs. And Manager Pedersen to. Uh, ask for a review of the materials. Um, as part of their sort of finalization and their implementation and to improve those plans where they can. If. The app, you know, and we do have a variance in front of you. Um. Query whether these particular changes or suggestions are directly related to the variance, but. Um, if the applicant agrees to those. Requests. As additions to the action of the Board of Managers, then legally I think you stand on fine ground to go ahead and. Include those.
Okay, so we have a motion. By Manager Cook and a second by Manager Duval. To approve the variants. Uh, based on the engineer's recommendation and the documentation. Documents. Or documentation provided. I'm not sure which is the right word. You get the drift. Um. So. Uh, Administrator Jeffrey, can we have a roll call vote on the motion?
Mr. President. So, Mr. President.
Uh, Manager Duval.
So if I may follow up with a question with regard to Mr. Welch's comments. If I'm hearing him correctly. He was saying that your comments and Manager Pedersen's comments could be incorporated into this. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. President, Manager Duval, uh, yeah, as. Suggestions, recommendations, take a look at, give it a try, and especially if the applicant agrees, yeah, that's no big deal. We're glad to do that as we, uh. As we move forward, so then I think that's fine. You could. You, you know, they also, they're here and they've heard your concerns, so they can be more or less. Formally tied into the motion as the managers deem best.
So, Mr. President, my question would be then, could. Could Manager Pedersen and yourself? Add your amendments again and we include those?
We can, but you seconded it. Um, unamended. Was my understanding. I could be.
I did, I did, I did, but that was before I heard. Mr. Welch's comments that they could be incorporated into the vote. So.
So, um. I. It seems to me that, that the way forward is maybe to vote on the motion. That has been seconded. And if it doesn't pass, then. Uh, additional motions can be made.
Okay. So I get, I guess my comment I would make is that I would. Proceed with the vote and then suggest that we vote again and add yours and Manager Pedersen's comments to the final vote.
Mr. Welch, I, I saw your hand up.
Managers are free to make motions to amend at this time.
Okay. So do we have any, uh, motions to amend? Uh. The motion on the table? I'll, I'll make one to, uh. Request that the applicant. Uh, consider, uh, maximizing the BMPs. Um, and especially the wetland characteristics. Of the BMPs. And Manager Pedersen, did you have? A motion?
I would recommend that the. Uh. Engineer slash architect look closely at the plant materials and choose native. Materials more appropriately.
Mr. Welch, have we worded those well enough?
Am I muted or unmuted? Okay, you can hear me. I would. President Ziegler, do you care to make that as a motion to amend rather than having two managers articulate?
Right.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to amend. To, uh. Uh, review the selection of, uh, plants. To try and, uh, pick some that are. Uh, native plants that are. Uh. More, uh. Well, I guess I'm not sure beyond that. They, native plants and to, uh. Maximize the, uh. BMPs. Um, with regards to, uh. Size, uh, habitat. And, uh, infiltration. And filtration of the water. As much as practicable. So that's my motion to amend. Do we have a second to the motion?
A second.
So we have a motion to amend and a second. Uh, any further dis? Um, Mr. Welch.
Sorry to interrupt again, Mr. President, but I recommend that you hear from the, uh. Applicant. As to their disposition as to the, uh, amendment.
Yes, uh, this is Lee Stokes with Excel Energy. Uh, we, the applicant agrees with those amendments. Okay. Thank you. Uh, do we have any other questions or comments from the managers before we vote on the motion to amend? Hearing none, uh, Mr. Jeffrey, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion to amend the original motion regarding the XL variance. Um, to maximize the function of the ponds, they pertain to wetland characteristics and other water quality benefits and to. Uh, incorporate native plants when possible to do so. Manager Crafton.
I vote yes on the amendment.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes, as to the, uh, amendment as it was. As it was stated.
Manager.
Stated by the mover.
Manager Pedersen.
Yes.
And President Ziegler.
Yes.
Five zero. Now there is the other motion on the table.
So do we have any more questions or comments on the, uh? Motion to. Uh, well, I believe we have a, uh. A written, uh. Motion here. But anyway, to, uh, approve the variants. Okay, can we have a roll call vote on, uh, adopting the, uh? Can you scroll down a little bit and I can? Do we have a number for this variance or anything?
It's the variance as it pertains to permit number twenty-two seventy-four, but. This is, this is what you are approving. This resolution right here with this.
Okay. Okay, so, um, as Mr. Jeffrey stated. Uh, can we have a roll call vote? To, uh, adopt the resolution as presented?
Manager Crafton.
Yes, I vote for, for the motion as the variance is amended.
Yes. Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Pedersen.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Five zero.
Thank you. Manager Cook.
I, I just want to make a comment that this type of discussion. Is exactly why we need to get involved in reviewing our rules. Um. To take into account, uh, issues and considerations that we have here, I believe are. Rules may be insufficient, at least with respect to some subject matter that other managers have brought up, so I just. Hopefully we will have that discussion as a workshop as pertains to the rules along with the other. Items considering rules that I've mentioned earlier tonight, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, um. The item F was removed. Um. Is that correct, Administrator Jeffrey?
Mr. Chair.
We are voting on the permit. Itself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I move that we adopt the. Proposed resolutions set forth at the bottom of page one. As they pertain to application for permit twenty twenty-two dash zero seven four.
A second, okay. Manager Pedersen seconds the motion Manager Cook made. Uh, do we have any further discussion or comments on this motion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, Mr. Jeffrey?
Yes. Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Pedersen.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Five zero.
Okay, so now we can move on to the next. Item. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, um. Does that bring us down to the discussion items?
Yep.
So the first discussion item is presentation of the proposed twenty twenty-four draft budget and levy. Do we, okay. Mr. Jeffrey, can you take us through this?
I will do my best, President Ziegler. As a Ziegler managers, uh, as we discussed at our. Last continuation of the meeting, I'm bringing back a budget. This would be the draft budget and in hopes of. Uh. Adopting it at our September meeting, um. After we have a public hearing. So. The budget is predicated upon an increase to the opportunity projects. For four hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year. What I have tried to do is put together a table that shows. The levy and the budget. On the top row for each year moving forward. Noting again that twenty twenty-eight is a bit. Cloudy because a lot of things get bog jammed in that year, not having twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, et cetera, to go forward. But that is also the time when our new plan needs to be adopted by. We may adopt a plan sooner than that, but. At any rate, by the end of twenty-seven, we will have a new plan. Um. In place. So. What I am showing on the top row is the proposed levy. Then the proposed budget for that year. Um. The carryover and I'll go into a little more detail on subsequent slides. But what I want is the, um. Basic premise here that. In twenty-four, we would have an eight percent levy increase. Twenty-five, nine percent levy increase, then eleven, eleven and fourteen. Now, there are, and we'll talk about it, there are things we can do, shuffle around in the future to do that, um, to make that less. Um. Our. Investment income has been significantly greater than what we had thought, although not enough. To offset these, uh, increases. In their entirety. In the second row. The second column is the anticipated carryover from the year before. Remember, many of our projects are multiple year projects and we may have levied for. Those projects prior to. Having actually, um. Done the project and in some cases like bluff creek five, we will have, we, um, bluff creek reach B five, which is upper bluff creek. We levied a significant amount last year and did not. Actually, or this year and did not spend it because it's going to be pushed out to accommodate this budget. In the, uh, oops, sorry, in the two rows below. I tried to talk about what is going to happen to various projects and later on in the presentation, I have more detail on these specific projects. Where, where they are located, what their scores were in our implementation plan, but. Um. So. The Lotus Lake alum. Second application, the, the first row is the projects that will occur. And what stages of those products will occur in that given year. The last row is the actual implication to. Projects or programs that are in our budget. Currently that will be, um. Will have to have their timeline manipulated to make this budget work. So next year, um. We, we will have the Lotus Lake alum treatment and hopefully we will have the final U of M study on that. And that would be done fall of twenty-four. It was originally scheduled for this year. The Lotus Lake Water Quality Improvement Project, that is going to be extended out, so we will be doing the design next year. But we are, um, looking at fall of twenty-five construction into twenty-six. Uh, initially we were going to construct it. Now the Lotus Lake Water Quality Improvement Project, it consists of four other. Lotus Lake projects that were in. Our budget or in our capital implementation plan, but in an effort to realize the savings. Um, by combining them into one, having one contract, one set of bid documents, one mobilization. Looking at a larger project. And in addition, um, the city had come to us, the city of Chan asset had come to us with some road projects they have and a willingness to partner on them, so. Um. So that'll be helpful in its scoring because originally. Um, we did not have, well, we had a three for partner score. Uh, meaning no money was going to be put into it. Love Creek B five again was going to be done, uh, in twenty-four. Instead was going to be started in twenty-four. Instead, we will finalize the design of B five. And then we will move its construction out to twenty-five. Oops. Twenty-five and to twenty-six. Um, so that is extended out to give us more time to levy those. Upper Riley Creek, we will stay on target with that, so we'll, we'll finish up. Twenty-four, we will have the construction. We still need to finalize the design. We're pretty close there. We need to still get all of our agreements in place with the different landowners and with the city to move forward on that project. So that will be what's worked on through twenty-four. Um, but then we'll have a, a. Fall construction. Oops, excuse me, Upper Riley will be. Um, constructed twenty, fall of twenty-four, finishing up in twenty-five. I have also added per the organization chart, two positions. Those will be discussed, uh, later on, but the organization chart that was adopted included the addition of. Um. And technician to help out staff Maxwell. As well as a stewardship coordinator. Um, so those two are budgeted to be added in addition to the shared position with Nine Mile Creek. Um, for the office assistant. And then the opportunity projects that we talked about. So. Implications, wetland management for next year will be reduced to twenty-five thousand dollars. We have, we will be finishing up with everything in light of the E HAP that we're doing. There's a really good chance that a lot of the wetland management will be rolled into that larger ecological, larger ecological picture. So this, there should be, um, no implication to the wetland program for that. After that twenty-five, we will bring that back up again, or it is budgeted to be brought back up again. Again, B five has moved back a year. Kerber Ravine has moved back two years. Kerber Ravine is also an equal. Kerber Ravine is also an equal one in that if we look for additional places for savings, we still have. This is not in our implementation plan and all of it has been scored, it scores high, the city does want to partner on it with us. Um, and it is a significant loader to Lotus Lake. But that's moved back two years from what we want, but this is one of those that we could. Switch around with other projects should people um, be so inclined. U of M plant restoration, that's done and eliminated. Um, P C one, and I've got maps again to show you where these are. Uh, Purgatory Creek one and Purgatory Creek two are moved back two years. Um, to to actually start there um. Uh, the construction is three years out, so the design would occur in twenty six. And then we already talked, I guess I put Bluff Creek five in there twice. In twenty five, again, the U of M plant restoration is eliminated and the groundwater. Project is reduced to five thousand dollars while we decide what to do, it'll give us enough time to evaluate. What we do if we advance wells next year, or if we come up with some other plan and that will. Will bring to the managers at a later meeting to discuss what they want to do with it. That's all, that's the only implications to the twenty five year projects. In twenty six, uh, Red Rock Lake seven was going to be moved back two years into the twenty eight levy. Uh, Lucy A three four, which is um. Located on the east side of Lake Lucy is moved back a year, this is another project where it was programmed for two thousand seventeen. Two thousand sixteen maybe even, and we did not get participation from the landowners necessary. So um, but those landowners have changed since then. We, this is one we could move off indefinitely until we know that we have landlord buy in on it before we do anything. So there's another opportunity. Uh, Lake Susan alum has been moved indefinitely and that is because. We still don't know how much of a loader the south wetland is to Lake Susan. And we don't know what. Um, what we're going to find as a benefit when we do Upper Riley Creek, so. It it should still be done, but there are some external loads that I think need to be addressed before we do the alum treatment. Not to mention there's still vegetation management that needs to occur on that way. U A As or the sustainability assessments, we still have in the budget, but that's been scaled down and moved back here, but these are going to be necessary. As part of our plan development, so um, I will work with engineer Soviet to to decide a scope. That works as well as possible to give us the information we need. Um, we are collecting a lot of new data, if you recall, you approved the um, purchase of four new. Uh, monitoring units, those. Uh, most except one have been installed, uh, and if we ever get rain, we'll start getting some data. With those. So that's what's the implications are for twenty six. Um, again, I talked about Purgatory Creek one and two, we moved back into this year. Um, and then um, Mitchell Lake three is being moved back two years, so there would be. Feasibility in twenty eight and then we would look at. Our next um, plan to see to see what, how this scores and how it fits in. And then Lotus Lake nine, which is uh, at the outlet of Lotus Lake. Um, that's been moved beyond this five year horizon. So. Well, that's just a broad overview, so what are we talking about with these projects, so? This map, everything in green has been done. There are projects that have been implemented, put in the ground. Everything in orange is something in progress and some level of progress and that level of progress might be just simply that it's in our plan. Or it might be um, further along than that. So Lucy A three four, which I talked about is right here, it's on the east side of Lake Lucy. It is um, a a total phosphorus reduction BMP. At the time that it was originally discussed, it was the thought was a spent line facility. Um, and perhaps that spent line facility would be underneath, I think it's Kiowa Trail right there. And would be underneath that. Lake Lucy A one point one zero C, which is moved beyond this event horizon. Is um, is um, iron enhanced sand filter or some other feature like that. And it was in um, homeowners association land that we were unable to identify. A contact for that homeowners association, so we don't even have land on which to put that feature right now. Lotus Lake one, seven, three and eight. Comprise the Lotus Lake Water Quality Improvement Project. Lotus Lake one is in North Lotus Lake Park, that would be um. A series of features, more of a stormwater park and that has partnership with um, Chad Aston Parks and Chad Aston Public Works. Lotus Lake seven is the um. Is, I'm trying to think of the name of the road there, it might be Lotus Lane, i- and it is um. Perhaps a wetland enhancement or some other structural BMP at the surface. L three is not as imperative now because the city has done much of the work already on the pond, but. There is stabilization of the channel right there where the pond discharges underneath Kerber. Kerber Road that should be addressed, it's a, it is a significant loader. Um, L L eight is Frontier Trail and Frontier Lake is so Frontier Trail Association property, we did do um. Infiltrator and soil testings at all of these locations. This is not suitable for infiltration because of the tight clays, Lotus Lake one is. Um, so we will be coming forward with with a. Design, design is going on right now for that. L nine is right here, that again was going to be a BMP for um, total phosphorus reduction of the landscape. That's when it will be pushed off the horizon. I do have the scores for these later on in the project, so you'll be able to see how they compare relative to one another. Red Rock Lake seven, uh, again, was a a. A surface BMP to address total phosphorus loading, this is one that's going to be moved out on two years on that horizon. Mitchell Lake three again is a pond enhancement, um. This pond, actually, we have, we've got, we're trying to collect that out here, it has been dry for the last two years and we don't have any data. Which again speaks to if we even know that the project would be viable. Bluff Creek three and four. Of these two stretches here, so here's B five, which you all visited on the tour last year, that's the galping crossing. Um, restoration of part of that wetland and then the channel restoration down to uh, highway five. So that will still stay. Um, in this five year window, but it's pushed back a year. Three and four are still in our budget. Um, as originally planned, although we spread out the number of years on which we are levying for them. Purgatory Creek one and two are lower Purgatory Creek value valley, those were scheduled for. I think to start this year initially in the ten year plan. Um, for construction next year, those will be pushed out to twenty seven and twenty eight. S T L seventeen. Is not on our plan right now. S T L one gets pushed out to the end of this, this cycle. Uh, and S T L twenty one. That one drops off and we would reevaluate that with our next plan. That's the location of them. I'm going to go through the different sections of our budget right now, just for twenty twenty four. So. This is the amount that we will have for carryover, if we look at what has been levied. What carried over into last year and what we anticipate to be spent. This is our grant income, this two hundred nine thousand dollars is very specific grant, this is the um, watershed based implementation funding grant. Um, and it is based on what the last one was, um, we anticipate it to be. Probably significant more because of the windfall of money that borrowers come into, but. We did not want to budget as though it would be any more than what it was the last time. But that actually is dedicated to a different project because with the water watershed based implementation funding works is. The watershed district gets together with the two counties and all of the municipalities and other load authorities that are within. Their area. And they decide upon a project or two um, to dedicate those funds to. Uh, in this case, there is a stretch of creek in Purgatory Park in Minnetoka that would be stabilized with that funding. Uh, permit revenue one hundred fourteen thousand, investment income, um, we've got it two hundred thousand, we have. To date this year, made one hundred fifty seven thousand, um, and. We have just received information from the four M fund, uh, Corey uh, Boyer. That uh, there is a nine month certificate available at five point three four, um, we're going to find out. I have, I have an inquiry into him to find a little bit more about that, but um, we certainly should be investing in that, so. Again, I think the investment income is conservative, but. Uh, I think it's probably better given the times we're in right now, and then the levy itself is four point one two eight. So that's the revenue projections for twenty four. So here are the administrative costs for twenty four. Um, staff costs have increased by one hundred sixty five thousand, six hundred twenty nine, and that's to pay for the two full time and one. Three quarter time staff as well as their benefits, para payroll, payroll taxes, et cetera, that go along with that. And then to account for um, staff raises in there. So those three positions again of a water resources technical specialist. The stewardship coordinator and then the office assistant that's being shared with uh, Nine Mile. And Mister Monahan is actually here tonight, and if we have time later in the evening, I might have him introduce himself to you, but. I don't want to put him on the spot right now, know all this. Um. Manager per D M's increased by fourteen percent to account for workshops and subcommittee meetings, and then all other expenses were um. Were put at just a a flat two percent increase. Any questions, if there's questions during uh, these, free to stop me on these specific slides. Might be easier than going back to them. So when we look at the district wide programs uh, and the implications to it. So we have eighty two thousand, seven hundred, that's carryover, I apologize, that's carryover. From the repair maintenance one, and that's because um, if you remember, we were going to. Do the Lake Susan Park pond reuse repair. Um, the bid, the single bid we got came back. Uh, almost three hundred percent over uh, engineer's opinion of cost. Uh, we are, engineer Soviet and I have been talking and I hope we've looped in Mister Welch at one point, but we will if we haven't yet. About the possibility of just adding it into the Upper Riley project and perhaps realize some savings there. Um, with that bid. Community resilience phase two um, is in this year for two hundred fifty thousand. Um, if you remember, we did the modeling for um. Bloomington and Eden Prairie, Minnetoka has updated their own model. Um, so now it's really start looking at the flood risk assessment mapping and identify projects that can provide community resiliency. In the past, there was a grant through the P C A for this, that's what helped fund the initial modeling. I am anticipating that grant to be available again and we will apply for that grant, but this budget is set up as though that grant does not exist. Uh, other, as I mentioned before, the wetland management. Uh, is reduced to twenty five thousand from one hundred thousand. The flood risk mapping um, is pushed out, what we have left is Chan Assen, Deep Haven and Shorewood. And a little bit of Chaska, um, we expect Chan Assen, we'd be a partner on it. Um, we will try and get Deep Haven and Shorewood and Chaska to help out as well, but at this point, it has been pushed out. Uh, until we've had those discussions and perhaps see where phase two leads us, but it would be nice to have a district wide model that we could use for all of it. Um. Well, the management I already talked about, and then the groundwater uh, is reduced to five thousand from one hundred thousand this year. And then U A A updates, um, which will be needed for plan update, but they're only sixty thousand, which will not allow us to do all of the U A As. So as I said, I will talk with engineer Soviet and we will come up with the best plan attack for that. The capital projects in Bluff Creek and Riley Creek, so again, um. We are looking at a carryover, so this, this number, we will be able to move into something else, the three eighty one, four twenty eight. Wetland restoration of Pioneer, we do have some restoration work left to be done, um, but that, that money will not be needed. Uh, in that line item. Then we have fifty five thousand carryover from Bluff Creek. Um, B five reach, um, B four was moved out. As I discussed earlier. B five, the levy is being spread out twenty four and twenty five, um, rather than all in one year. B three is still on, but for twenty seven and twenty eight, there's no levy buildup prior to the twenty twenty seven, so that's why you see big jumps in twenty eight. Um, so we may, we can, may have to look at that timeline extending a little further. Uh, Rice Marsh. Lake alum was moved from twenty four to twenty five, the lake is responding very well still, I did talk to Joe Bischoff. Um. Caution pushing it out too far, but at the same time, uh, he said that it has responded really well. Uh, he's not seeing any indication of deterioration anytime soon. Upper Riley, um, is to have a fall twenty three or twenty four construction rather than twenty three, twenty four. One point nine six million has been levied this year for that project. Um, that's why the budget is so large, but our levy is relatively small for this. Um. We have the, uh, we're levying most of it. Lake Susan alum, as I discussed, is moved indefinitely until we can figure out the external loading and how much of an impact they have. Uh, and then Lucy A point, A one point one zero C, which is the one on the north side of the Lake Lucy Lane. Has been moved out indefinitely, um, due to the absence of of land that it can be placed on. Okay, so these projects and their relative scores. Uh, B three, which is right here. Scores a thirty nine. B four thirty seven. B five is a thirty seven as well, although this score was prior to uh, including the wetland restoration, but I don't want to. Say that it would increase the score or would not increase the score. Lucy A one, uh, which is this one again, scores a thirty four. And that was the iron enhanced sand filter. And then A three four scores a thirty two. So that's why they were pushed further in our capital plan to begin with, they scored considerably more than other projects that we had. Um, so that is the bluff and the Riley watersheds. Again, green are projects that have been done. Orange are projects that are some, in some manner in progress. So, um, the Purgatory Creek watershed. Projects and annual totals, so again, Lotus Lake alum moved back from twenty three to twenty four, all at twenty four. Uh, Lotus Lake Watershed improver project, which is comprised of three C I P projects. Design and cooperative agreement will continue in twenty twenty four and construction moved back one year to twenty twenty five. P C one, P C two moved back to year twenty twenty six to begin the feasibility and design of it. And Kerber Ravine moved back two years to twenty twenty six. Uh, levy, then for twenty four, we'd be levying uh, to finish the berm. And that berm will be a joint project with Chan Assen, uh, there are a number of things to work out, we'll need to do. A plan amendment, I was talking with Mister Welch about it. Uh, he believes it does not meet the requirements for repair and maintenance under statute, that that. The change in design is enough that it was not the original project, so we'll need to do a plan amendment to do that. Uh, and the other part that I'm going to want to do is have Eden Prairie take over the permit, so it's no longer in our name. Lotus Lake, uh. Maybe the rest that's necessary for that application. And then, um, Duck Lake Road Partnership is on through twenty twenty six and then will, um, drop off. So four hundred sixty one thousand being levied in that watershed.
So quick question, Terry, on the plan amendments. If we make more than one, we do them. The same time, just to keep it simple or, yeah, okay, thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. So those, um, projects, so PC one, PC two, which are down here. Um, then, cause they're lower in the watershed, um, there isn't as much infrastructure at risk. They scored thirty ones. Um, to put that in perspective, uh, most of our other restorations were thirty seven, thirty eight, thirty nine category. Red Rock Lake seven, which is, um, this right here, uh, structural BMP on the landscape. Total phosphorus reduction, at all likelihood, iron enhanced sand filter scores a twenty eight. Mitchell Lake three drops down to a twenty four. And then, uh, Lotus Lake Water Quality Improvement Project, which is one, three, seven and eight, uh, scores a thirty. Um, and again, there can be multiple BMPs on this project.
Mr. President. There is your president. Question for Administrator Jeffrey. So the scores, have the scores changed or are you just reiterating the scores?
President Ziegler, manager develop, I'm just reiterating the score so that you have a relative comparison because. You know, RRL seven and ML three are two of the projects that are moved out to the end of this cycle. Um, and just trying to demonstrate that we are not, at least for our scoring purposes. These, the projects that score higher are staying in this capital plan the way we have set it out.
But the scores are the same as when they were originally issued to the projects.
That, that is correct with the exception of the Lotus Lake Water Quality Improvement Project, because we now have partnership with the city of Chan Hassan. So that went from a three to a seven. So it went from a twenty six to a thirty.
Okay, thank you.
So this is kind of a, a summary. Unfortunately, I picked colors that don't really stand out, but. The violets are all projects that stay on. But are, their schedule is manipulated to either levy over a few more years or push back a year or two. So one, three, seven, eight, Buck Creek four, Buck Creek three, Mitchell Lake, Red Rock. The two purgatories. And STL seventeen. So they're all still in the gen or in the capital, five year capital plan. Um, just the way we are levying for them is spread. This red, that's almost exactly the same, uh, is moved beyond. This five year horizon, but has not fallen off completely. The ones that are in gray, so STL one is, um, Bent Creek Golf Course. It is Bent Creek, yeah, Bent Creek Golf Course. We were originally, this was the project we were going to do when instead, um, Middle Riley was done. But when we met with Bent Creek, they were unwilling to, um, modify any of their fairways or, or. Playing surfaces to allow for the fluffers. So we do not have a partner there to do that project. So that's. You know, if, if it showed, if we get a partner one day, great, but right now I don't anticipate being able to do that project. The same with A one point one zero. And then Lucy A three point four, uh, I put in there because originally it was the same thing. The landowners did not want to participate. We don't know that the new landowners would want to participate. I will reach out to them, um, but that would be programmed much later in the five year cycle anyway. That's a summary of the projects that have moved out. So again, this was the original slide, twenty four levy. Eight percent increase, twenty five levy nine, twenty six eleven, twenty seven eleven. And then twenty eight to fourteen percent increase. These are the projects that would be done in those years, or at least the phases of the project. Uh, and these are the implications to projects for that year. We'll send this to all of the managers and post this on our website as well, so that you have it, uh, for consideration. Other potential reductions that could be done. Um, you could reduce the grant funds. And if you look at what is in the, in the original ten year plan. Uh, the grant budget is, is one hundred ninety five thousand, I believe. Uh, we could reuse it from two fifty five to two hundred thousand, saving fifty five thousand a year, two hundred seventy five thousand over the course. We could return to one meeting a month, that would save about thirty nine thousand a year. Uh, and then A three four is included in our budget still. Um, but we could push it beyond that window pending if we have any buy in. So total of these would be an additional hundred and twenty five thousand, two eighty that could be reduced to about, um, three percent of eleven. That is the presentation on the budget. I will send the full spreadsheet. Um, to the manager so that you have between now and September to, um, look over it, to make comments, to, to give me your thoughts. Um, on it, but I wanted to make sure that, um, I addressed adequately what the implications are. To our capital plan.
So, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
So I have a question for Administrator Jeffrey and perhaps, uh, uh, Mr. Welch. Uh, does changing the timelines with respect to these projects on our plan require a plan amendment?
As President Ziegler, manager cook, to my knowledge, they do not, but I am going to defer to Mr. Welch on that. That is a good question.
Usually Bowser does not view those changing the year as a amendment. It's more of an administrative item.
Like, if I could follow up, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
So. I mean, is, are there any caveats to that? Like if we change significantly the amount of money or whatever we. We going to spend, that I mean, when does it become a required plan amendment or any, or rules? Those guidelines, guideposts?
I, I can reach out to Mr. Christopher from Bowser and get a, get a ruling from him unless Mr. Welch has something. But to my knowledge, there aren't any hard fast rules when the Senate triggers or when it doesn't.
Mr. Chair Terry, Manager Cook, I, you know, uh, I'll be playing that. I think Bowser's view on the amendments and, um. Ends to be, if they're non controversial, they're pretty happy to have a watershed treat them as. Um, either administrative or at most a minor plan amendment. Given that you were doing other plan amendments this year, it certainly would not hurt. To sort of include the year changes in those amendments as you're doing them and have a comprehensive sort of. You know, minor rearrangement of the schedule for. Projects, um, the other thing, I, I. My philosophy is to present a plan to Bowser and let them agree with it. Don't ask them an open ended question.
Uh, if I can continue, Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
Uh, I don't know if that was a. Satisfactory answer from a agency point of view. No, nothing against your, your, uh. Response, Mr. Welch, but, uh, I don't know that I, sorry. It's telling me it's past my bedtime. Um. It, it, it just, you know, I mean, we're making significant, uh, you know, changes and, um. You know, I keep looking back at one oh three B and, uh, you know, I've stated before, I think. My impression is that there's a lot of folklore surrounding one oh three B and what it allows and doesn't allow. And I think that, uh, maybe too often people actually don't look at the actual wording of one oh three B. And it, it, I think it's tighter than what certain people have, have espoused. Uh, but then again, I guess, uh, you know, being a lawyer, I don't believe in skirting a, a rule just because nobody says so. I don't think I could do that ethically. Uh, so that, you know, that's, I raise that question, but I would say that I would agree that. I would much prefer presenting a plan with changes and, uh, you know, and. Going through the approval process. My question is why not? So, um, yeah, you know, on that, on that basis. So, uh, I, I guess that's, you know, wait to see the, the details, but you know, we're really looking at a budget. Uh, for one year, you know, for twenty twenty four, and we're looking at an eight percent increase. Uh, you know, I think that's probably, you know, given inflation and everything is, is, would probably make sense. It may well be, I guess begrudgingly acceptable. I think we're going to have a. I would have a concern being a taxpayer, having nine, eleven, you know, fourteen percent increases. I think that would be. That could be problematic and I wouldn't blame people for having issues with that, uh, especially since. Uh, you know, Carver is done. And, and in particular Chan Assen, they've been pretty stingy with their overall increases. So our increases end up. You know, being, being significant. I'm not saying Carver or Chan Assen is correct. I'm just saying that's what they've been doing. Uh, maybe to a fault in, in, in my, my opinion. So I look forward to getting the detail here and, and looking at those, but. Um, I, I would want to see your budget outline, you know, your spreadsheet that has the. Breakdown of year by year, but category by category, especially, you know, administrative. Costs. And so we can see what's going to be spread over, over, uh, future years. And maybe that goes to. I, I guess the, the presentation, uh, at least internally. Uh, if there would be a breakdown that would show what we actually. Plan on spending on a project in twenty twenty four. And then another column with, you know, spend, uh, you know, in future years that. Uh, for one thing, that we've already accumulated. For example, as opposed to parts of future levies, if you, you get what I'm trying to say. I mean, like, uh, the one example, what we were, you know, already levied, what, one point nine million for one project? I don't know if we're going to spend it all in one year, but if it was a case where we'd be split over a couple of years, I'd like to know. You know, what are we actually looking at spending out of that? That money, you know, in the twenty twenty four and what would be the carryover to cover the costs in, in future years? I know the spreadsheet will do that, but it would be nice to have it boiled down to that one budget. Sheet that we see that overall, that summary sheet at one extra column to show, you know, future year payment all summed up. So I guess those are, I think those are all my comments right now. Thank you.
Do any other managers have questions or comments at this time?
Mr. President.
Managed well.
So I guess this is a question for Mr. Welch again, and it was when, uh. Administrator Jeffrey was going through his presentation, there was a project somewhere back in there where there was discussion about. That might require. Um, an amendment, plan amendment. What, how does that relate to what we're talking about right now or doesn't it? Do you follow what I'm saying?
President Ziegler, managers, yeah, there are. We, we still can budget for it, but we would need to amend the plan before we could actually do the project. So, um, for instance, the berm.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. So for instance, the berm like, uh, Mr. Welch or, or, and the other one was. Oh, the, what was the other one?
So it's in the budget.
Kerber, Kerber Creek, Kerber Reven, yeah.
It's in the budget, but we haven't, um, it, it's not in the amendment or not in our amended plan yet. Is that what you said?
That is correct. That is correct. So we would, we could not do the work without amending the plan.
Okay. So how is that different from what we're talking about now?
It's just another process that we have to do to go through to, to have it be approved and in our plan. And you, you as managers could, could choose to say, no, we do not want to have that project. And then that levied funds would be distributed to, to other projects and would reduce levy elsewhere.
So I guess my general question was more along the lines of, that's something that would. I forget what year that was in, but is that, that was something that I think Mr. Welch said would require an, an amendment to the plan? Is that in the same category as what we're talking about now, or we're talking about moving projects around and? That sort of thing.
No, adding a project is clear. It requires an amendment. Um, there is no way. No gray area there. No, whether it's a minor or major plan amendment, maybe it's some gray area, but it will require amendment in order to.
So how did it get it? How did it get in our tenure plan without being in the?
It's not in our tenure plan.
The, the, I don't know, we were talking about a ways back in your presentation.
It's not in our tenure plan. It is.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
Michael, let's, Mr. Welch.
Mr. Welch.
Mr. Chair and Managers briefly, to the degree that I made any comment that sounded like I recommend. Not following the requirements of the rules or the, or the statutes with regard to. Plan amendments, nothing Terry and Scott will, uh. Write numerous examples of circumstances in which. I advised otherwise, and I never advise skirting any legal requirements, however. Counsel to staff and to the board ultimately always requires balancing statutes and the rules. And the facts of the plan and the facts of the projects that are being proposed and finding the best possible way. To proceed with them under the rules, which. Is often easier said than done, and it's often not even that easy to say. So doing it requires a certain amount of. Gymnastics and we work closely with Bowser and. Proposed means of proceeding with them and like it or not. We have to deal with the politics of some of those proposed ways of presenting. Materials that need or presenting plan amendments or any, any other change frankly of something the district wants to do, but it. To the degree I said anything that sounded like we would not do a plan amendment or we'd need to, I would never advise as much, just to be clear.
Yeah, I can attest to that.
Thank you. Are there any more questions or comments from any of the managers on the, uh, presentation? Okay, um.
President Ziegler.
Manager Crafton.
I just want to thank Terry and staff for all the work on this. I think you've done a really good job. I think it's really comprehensive and. Put a lot of thought into it. So, thank you.
President Ziegler. I feel exactly the same way. There's a whole lot that went into this and I'm. I've got a new level of admiration to how to move things around and still be able to make it work.
Well, thank you.
Okay, um. Let me see. So the next thing on the agenda looks like, uh, fall tour discussion items, uh, fall tour. Is that correct?
Yes. Can you give me one moment, please? I want to let Mr. Pressman know that we are nearing the time where we're going to want him available.
Okay. Okay.
And then, yes, that is next on the agenda.
Do we need a short break? Does, does anyone want a five minute break besides me?
President. Mr. President. Yes, I, I asked that we have a five minute recess.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll second, well, no, wait, I can just say that. Yeah, let's have a five minute recess. So it's, uh, ten, ten now, according to my computer. So ten fifteen, we'll be back.
Very good.
Thank you.
Are we all here?
Um, well, it's time, so.
Managers, Mr. President.
Yeah, okay. So let's reconvene. It's ten sixteen, according to my computer. And Mr. Jeffrey, you're going to talk about the fall tour.
President Ziegler, managers. Remember last year we did a fall tour where we reviewed several of the projects that we have undergoing this year because of where we're at in the status of the project. We don't really have interesting sites to you. However, as part of the Ehab program, we have identified sentinel sites of different eco types that will be used to do to be our frame of reference for when we start looking at what should an urban environment look like. Several of our staff went and took a tour of those. Monday, Tuesday, I don't know. At any rate, and we were thinking that that would be a good thing to do with the managers to go and look at these sites. There are also sites that we're doing our our soil testing on or infiltration testing and and et cetera. So what I would like to ask is we are thinking of doing it the last week of September. You don't have to give me an answer now, but if the managers would like to now, might be a good time to say, is there a day in the last week of September that you know will not work? And you can email me that or however you want to do it, and I can put that all together. But that's really what that is. Feel free to discuss it now or tell me later.
It looks like my schedule is pretty open. Manager Peterson.
Not the twenty-fifth, not the twenty-fifth. Otherwise, I'm good that week.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
I'm I'm sorry, given the given the late hour, can people just send in their information? Can we move on to the closed session or the closed session and and especially in light of Manager Peterson's day? Which is.
That that sounds like a motion. Is there a second? I heard a second there. Any discussion before we vote? Can we have a roll call vote? Because we're changing the agenda, right?
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Chair, to the degree it's relevant, and I think it is, you may wish to keep a three-minute update on the Spring Valley Friends on your agenda prior to your entering closed session. That's a suggestion.
Okay.
So men, but for that, let can we read this along, please?
So you're accepting that as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so can we have a roll call vote, please, Administrator Jeffrey?
And to be clear, it is to have managers send me their information for when they're available last week of September and then skip straight to item nine D, the update on Spring Valley.
Correct.
All right, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Peterson.
Yes.
Man, President Ziegler.
Yes.
All right, five zero.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
So we're having somebody make a presentation then, Spring Valley right away, so we can move on.
That's Mr. Welch, are you prepared to speak to that matter?
Okay, Mr. Welch, please proceed.
Mr. President, managers, the Court of Appeals on Monday, the Minnesota Court of Appeals released its decision on the appeal from Spring Valley Friends to that court in the matter contesting the district's issuance of a permit for the Noble Hill development, the court opinion. I would describe it as hit hit the ball right down the pipe in favor of the district and in favor of the appeal of the district's permit decision being dismissed on summary judgment. So the Court of Appeals affirmed the lower courts, the district courts dismissal on the permit grounds. It's an unpublished decision, which the court either publishes or doesn't publish decisions when they think that the item is not the decision is not precedential or of presidential value, they will issue unpublished decisions. Most of their decisions are unpublished, so this fits with that. The appellant's the Spring Valley Friends have thirty days to file for a writ of certiorari, is what it's called, to the Supreme Court to hear further appeal of the matter. We have not received any information yet indicating their intent in that regard, and they certainly have not yet filed. So that's the status of that. That means that the watershed district permitting decision challenge is dismissed. Remaining is the possibility of refiling the complaint under the Minnesota Environmental Rights Act. I won't go into the details and the procedural steps and posture of that, given ten twenty-two P M. But we have not heard or seen anything indicating an intent to refile the Mira claim.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
That we go into closed session, we discuss potential acquisition of property located nine nine five five nine eight seven five Spring Road in Berg and Soda and Park. Personal P I P two eight one one six two two three two zero zero five.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion before we go to a roll call vote? Hearing none, can we have a roll call vote, Administrator Jeffrey?
Close session, Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Peterson.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
All right, five zero. Let me send some people into the waiting room. All right, I will let everybody back in.
Thank you, Mr. Pressman, for coming this late.
Pleasure to be with you as always. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we have member reports to go. And upcoming board topics. Can we get through this pretty quick or? You know, it seems like a short amount to have to recess and come back to, but I understand it's it's pretty late, so.
Mr. President.
Manager Cook.
You know what? I'd I'd like to, but when is our workshop? What day is it?
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Weeks and one day.
I I I move that we that we recess this until six thirty on. What is it? What'd you say again? It was the
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. At six thirty and we can finish this up.
President Ziegler.
Manager Crafton.
I want to know what Council Welsh Welch's availability is at that point. Because we we're going to have him walk through the delegation.
Mr. Welch.
You want to get a second on that motion first, so then you can be informed?
I'll second.
There you go. August seventeenth is Thursday, six thirty.
Seven.
What's that?
Just seven, just a half hour because our workshop starts at seven.
Oh, six thirty to seven. All right. I'm sorry, I have multiple calendars. I have to check. But so far, so good. Oh, wait, I know the easiest way to check. Uh, that is fine. Yes, I have something at eight fifteen.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Jeffrey?
I have a motion to recess until August seventeenth at six thirty P M. Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Well, Manager Peterson.
Yes.
President Ziegler.
Yes.
Five zero to recess.
Thank you, everyone. Sorry for the late hour.
Thank you.
Bye.
Take risks now.
Good night, all.
Good night.